Did we bring enough coffee for everyone?
We did.
The mayor says I can call this meeting to order. Whack.
Good morning, Member Furlong.
Here.
Member Aboud.
Here.
Member Bonkowski.
Here.
Member Bagwell.
Here.
Vice Chair Kroll.
Here.
Oh, Member Barrett.
Yes.
Chair Pintar?
Here, thank you.
Dr. Pintar, we have a call.
I appreciate that, thank you. We will begin with public comment. If there's anyone who wishes to address the Board of Health on any pertinent matter, we will speak now or forever hold your peace. Never mind then, okay. We will go on to approval of the minutes of June 1, 2017.
I move approval of the minutes of June 1, 2017, as presented.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for the vote. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion passes, thank you. We have, our first item is... Oh, my report. Well, what do you know? There you go. All right. Well, I thought I'd start by saying that the community has had a healthy summer overall. Welcome to the first day of fall with that stupid snow on the stupid mountain, but never mind my feelings. We have had no unusual outbreaks of illness except for a semi-expected increase in West Nile virus. I want to tell you a little bit about that. West Nile virus, as you know, is a mosquito-borne illness that can be more common after a wet winter. We've had three cases locally, three reported in Carson City, but overall in our reporting area, which includes Douglas, Lyon County, and Carson City, there's actually been 21 cases. The average age is 53 years old, about two-thirds of them were male, and interestingly enough, a third of the cases were neuroinvasive, which is the more severe form. Dustin, there were no deaths, right? But there were a couple of hospitalizations.
For the record, Dustin Booth, in our tri-county area, there has not been any deaths.
Right, there was one in Reno, as I recall.
Correct, yes.
Anyway, so...
Hunting.
Hunting?
Yeah, I mean, the...
Actually, the common exposure point was being at Lake La Houghton or in Douglas County parks.
Interesting.
Mm-hmm. Anyway, because it's a mosquito-borne illness, there have been some, a lot of ongoing efforts at mosquito control and eradication, and we have been, we feel we've been quite successful in these efforts, given the somewhat limited resources. I also wanted to talk about, a little bit about follow-up on our school immunizations. Those of you who might remember, about a year ago, we had some concern because the immunization rate for children entering school was, shall we say, not stellar. And since then, there's been a concerted effort between the Health Department and Carson City School District and Sierra Family Clinic to improve that rate. The school district has allocated their school nurses additional time and resources to check vaccines, make sure that the parents know that their kids need the vaccines or are going to need the vaccine, and both the Health Department and Sierra Family held back-to-school immunization events, anyway, the upshot of which is that of the 700 children who should have had their DPT to come back into sixth or seventh grade, I think Sheila Story, who's the school nurse, told me that it was somewhat less than 5% that weren't coming in fully immunized. So, that's a, that's a big improvement. And I want to give a lot of thanks to the school district because they've been able to allocate some resources to improve that. As a community reminder, for all parents of middle-school-age kids, when children are 10 or older, they are now required to have their tetanus booster, called the TDAP, and a meningitis vaccine, and they should also get an HPV or human papillomavirus at that same time. So, when they are being naughty, you can threaten them not coming to visit. Dr. Pintar, getting three shots. Now, Will, your child's not quite old enough, but I'll be glad to get her when it's her time. And let's see. Flu season will soon be upon us. Da-da-da-da.
Isn't that today?
Flu season?
Yeah.
Yeah, what is the official start? I'm not su, I don't think it's till October 1, isn't it? Yeah. Anyway, so the Health Department is planning a number of special events that will target vulnerable populations, and there will be a community-wide flu clinic held on Saturday, October 14. Now, somebody's supposed to stand up and pass out brochures right now. Ronnie, is that you?
They're on the back table.
They're on the back table. Dustin, could you bring one up for each of the board members?
I don't have enough for each of the members, but...
Oh, I wanted each to have one to take to your respective agencies. Carrie told me she was going to make a bunch.
It's on the floor.
Okay. And put them up at your respective agencies, and anybody who's interested, please do. As you know, the vaccine is offered basically to anyone. It is free if you have your insurance card. The Health and Human Services will bill insurance. We do not turn away anybody for lack of ability to pay, and that's an important point. Our nurses are going to be holding the school-based vaccine program again, and it's becoming more and more successful each, as each year goes by. One of the biggest benefits of getting school-age kids vaccinated is it keeps them in school. One, you don't have to stay home with the little darlings, but two, those of you, they, yeah, they are, the children are nice community vectors, so we want, we want to reduce the vector population for influenza as well. And just as a reminder, those of you who do remember our big flu outbreak in 2009, Carson City's children had a much higher flu immunization rate that year than surrounding counties. We didn't have to close any schools. We didn't have to do any public health measures. Our kids stayed in school. The absence rate was just a little above the typical of 5%. So, to me, it was a good reason for everybody to get vaccinated. Anyway, October 14 down at the Senior Center is when the flu, our citywide flu clinic will be held. All right, so I think that's about it. Today's meeting should be relatively short. We have a lot to look forward to in our December meeting, since we'll be hearing for, follow-up on our mental and behavioral health, as well as some other things. So, that's it for now. Anything you want to tell me?
Dr. Pintar, can I also add that on October 20, we're going to have a flu clinic especially for seniors, and that will be at the Carson City Senior Center from 9 to 11:30, in addition to the other events that we have scheduled.
Thank you. All right. Let's see. I don't think it says for possible action. Yeah, so we don't have to do anything for that. And now, I will ask Ms. Nikki to, actually, I guess Dustin will give us some information. This is a follow-up on our discussion of regulations for the food service and food code changes.
Good afternoon. For the record, Dustin Booth, Carson City Health and Human Services. Today, I wanted to give you a very brief update of some of the activities that we've been doing since our last Board of Health meeting. Up on the slide there is a timeline that we're, for the next, till through December. Currently, the draft language that we have been working on, on the food code update, is in, at the DA's office for review. We are planning to have a public meeting with the industry on October 30, and then, based on their, their feedback, hopefully, there's not too many changes, then we bring in our first reading on November 16 with a second reading by December 7. So, some of the things that we've been working on since the, my, the last Board of Health meeting, is we've been working on a grade card system or a placard system. We've also been revamping our inspection sheets. Over in the lower-left corner is, is an example of the new inspection sheet, where the items in red are the critical risk factors, items in the blue are the good retail practices. We've also been working on what's called a field inspection guide, which breaks down each violation, what is a violation and what's not a violation, so that it's good guidance for the inspectors, but also can be shared with, with the operators on what the expectations are. Any, any questions?
Dustin, in terms of the grade card system, are you going to do any sort of emoji system so that there's international understanding of how each of the establishments is rated?
Right now, we've been, we've, we've, have some draft stuff, but we've sort of internally looked at a, an ABC or a pass conditional pass. We've internally came up with some emoji-type, type things. Some individuals shared with me Seattle, up in King County's emoji system. We looked into how they do it. It's a quite a complex system of how they do that and very staff resource-oriented. It's actually based on their last four inspections. That's, that's how Seattle does it. Is it, the emoji symbol that they get is based on their last four inspections, so it's not based on the most recent inspection, it's based on a, like a history of that. So, that particular model, I think, is just too resource-intensive for, for our organization. So, right now, we've just, we've internally have been working on, like an ABC or a pass conditional pass.
Dustin, during our discussion on this earlier, we talked about the timing on release to the public. What does the language call for in terms of your grading system, plus there, the restaurant or whatever, rectifying the situation? Is it all going to be at the same time?
So, in regards to some of the draft language, we, we talk about the timeframes of, you know, inspection and a re-inspection, but normally during a regular inspection process, critical violations that are, that are noted need to be corrected on-site, and so some type of mitigation done, and then there'll be, in our, our new regulations, a timeframe set for a re-inspection or a re, you know, replacard, a re-grading of the, of the establishment.
To repeat my question, what's the timing on the release of the information to the public?
Oh, to the, sorry.
Will the restaurant have input before that's done or after?
So, I mean, the, what I'm getting, I guess you, like, the grading that go, that we share with the public in regards to the inspection reports? And so, I mean, at, at this point, our inspection report is, the inspection report, we could talk to the operator at that point, and then we finalize the report, and then that report then would be considered a public record. We haven't looked at any other process of having a rebuttal of what our report says to be public record from the restaurant.
Why not?
I mean, we could, I can look into that. Most of our other models that we get into in regards, when I look at other models of other jurisdictions, there, I haven't seen that model out there.
But what you're saying, I'm sorry, what you're saying is that the, the inspection is done, it's discussed with the operator of the restaurant at that point, then it's finalized, and then it's put into public record?
Yes.
So, there is an opportunity for that beforehand, that back-and-forth beforehand? Okay.
But as I recall in our discussion previously, the problem that was cropping up was that there, that was a verbal exchange, and then they rectified things, but that they had, they had no input into what got on the record. Is that right or not? I mean, you're getting the input face-to-face, but in that...
So, our current electronic system has, we, on the backend, we build in canned language in regards to, you know, so it's, so that our language is consistent on, on the violations that we note, and so, you know, we're in the process of developing that and re-updating that, because it's been a while since we've re-updated that. And we'd be more than glad to have industry look at that language so they can see what that says, but part of it is, is, you know, you'd be, I guess, consistent in regards to what our findings say for the official record.
The point I'm trying to get at is, as I said at the time we discussed this previously, that it's only part of the story if the other side of the equation is not in there. And so, I'm asking if there is a format in which the person who's gotten the violation has to provide, whatever they want to call it, their defense, their justification or lack of justification, their view of the situation. These are all, I know, scientific in, in one regard, but the other side might have a different view of what you're saying. And I'm talking about the time at which it is released to the general public that both, you know, both aspects are involved, not just the inspector's aspect. Is that provided for in there?
We've traditionally not had that situation, that, if that's, I guess, a direction that we need to go. I mean, that's typically not how, how that, that's been done. It's just our, it's our official report.
Dustin, I know what John's referring to, and various restaurants have contracts for various things, and if there is a problem and the operator corrects, that has, calls their, their contracted agency, and they come out and fix it during the course of the inspection, how is that accounted for in the report?
So, our software allows for corrected on-site. We, we note the violation, and then it's corrected on-site, so then it's documented within the system that it's corrected on-site, and then that's printed on the official report.
So, then also, let's talk about if the inspector is on-site and they actually disagree with the interpretation of the inspector. So, let's say the inspector checks number six is a violation, and the food proprietor says, "I don't agree with you. I don't agree, I'm violating number six." They have the opportunity to call into the office, to speak to a supervisor, ask for a higher authority inspection on that issue, and then you just wouldn't final that one until you resolve the maybe disputed item. I guess that's more, in essence, is I don't agree that I have the violation, so I could call Dustin and say, "I don't have this violation," and he's wrong. Would you just hold that one in abeyance until...
So, so the, you know, the inspections are an optional, based inspection. They make their observations, and then if there is a, there's an opportunity for the operator to come back at a separate time to discuss those, those violations, if they disagree with them or not. But, but it's normally, this is our observations that day, this is what we observe, and that's what's documented.
What if the inspector's wrong? No, they're wrong.
Then there would need to be some additional information provided in regards to, to that so that we can resolve that situation.
That's all. I just wanted to make sure everyone was clear. There's opportunity for resolution if there's an error that's been made by the party. That's all. And that's what you're after.
Didn't you say at a separate time later?
So, correct. So, I mean, I welcome, I mean, some of you, we've gone out and inspected, but some people that have not gone out and inspected, I welcome you to come out and see our interactions that, that happen. And a lot of times, you know, there's a lot of, they, they disagree with everything that we find, even though it's pretty obvious that we found things wrong. So, we do our report, and then at a separate time, if they want to disagree and show that this was, this was, this was wrong, then we would deal with that at, at another time. Now, if an inspector, it doesn't have the proof and is marking things wrong, we, you know, we need to know about that, because that is not an acceptable behavior. But, but dealing with the operators, a lot of times, they, they don't, they don't see it the same way as, as the inspector sees it.
No doubt. My, my point is, at the time of the release to the general public, is that prior to the time in which the owner can come back or the manager can come back and make their orders after?
So, normally, there, currently, there's a 10-day process that they, they file for a meeting, and we have 10 days to set that meeting up so, so that we can discuss the findings.
Let's go to the heart of my question, which is, when do you release it to the public? After that 10 days?
Nor, I mean, our process currently is that we release, I mean, once the report's finalized, then it's, then it's public record.
But it's not finalized if you've got a 10-day period in which you're going to have negotiations, is it?
I mean, I guess...
I don't know if you're having negotiations, right?
I mean, I mean, it's been a long time since somebody has, has, has done, has...
If I chose the word, wrong word, I, what I'm talking about, you say they have a 10-day period in which they can come and dispute, right?
Not, so, I mean, that's what the code, normally, that the, there's not been very many disputes in regards to the, to the, to the inspections.
But you just said that many restaurateurs say, "I don't agree with that."
And that's usually a conversation between the inspector and them at the time of the inspection.
But they don't request a dispute, but they don't request a dispute resolution. So, on the bottom of the form where they sign, they aren't writing, "I request dispute resolution," and so then it would be final if they didn't ask for a dispute.
I don't know what's so hard about my question. I asked when you release it and whether there's been the opportunity for the restaurateur to have his say in that before it goes out generally. I'm not trying to hide anything here, I'm just trying to get both sides on the record. You know, government isn't perfect, and neither are the restaurants. I'm not trying to take sides here, I just want to know, when do you release it? Right that day, or two days later, or what?
So, in a, in a normal inspections, we, our inspection reports, they're put into, they're put into the system, and then we release them weekly to, to the paper and to other media outlets so that they can do what they want with them. But if we have a public records request from the citizen, if it's in the system, then it, then it's, then it's there. I have not had somebody wanting to try to dispute and to go through that, so I don't have personal experience about, about that, but usually when it's gone into the system, then, then it's available for, for release.
But it wouldn't be finalized until all that's taken care of?
But, I guess, I just haven't had a personal experience with somebody disputing to try to basically not have that inspection report go. It's usually, the inspection report is, stands as what the inspection report is, and then, then we, there's an opportunity for, if the establishment wishes, there's an opportunity for, to, to, to do that, to have a, a hearing in regards to the, to, to the inspection, and then, based on that, we would have our resolution.
And that's what goes to the public?
Final, is that good?
Final, what goes to the public?
No.
So, the initial one, the initial one, let me, let me see if I'm somewhere, because I'm, I'm outside of the system, so if I understand, an inspection is given, there is a discussion of the findings at the time of the inspection, the inspector and the owner, let's say, may have a disagreement, some of those might be corrected on-site. If the, but if the owner signs off on that inspection, then it is brought back to the office, filed, and becomes public record at that point. And if the owner has a significant disagreement, he or she has the option of not signing that record, not signing that inspection. Is that correct?
I mean, they, we would just note that they refused to sign it.
Right.
But it's, the inspection stands.
Right, and then would it be released to the, would it be, would that, the inspector come back to the office and release it as a, a non-signed one, or would they wait for a dispute resolution?
Mostly, I mean, the standard protocol is that they would, they would put it, you know, it'd be either uploaded to the system or entered into the system at that time. I just don't have personal, you know, no one has ever...
Right.
Tried to, to go through that process, so...
No, I would just like to add, the public nature of a restaurant inspection is slightly different because we release the information to the public than things like the building department, engineering, the fire inspection, things like that. But in all those similar inspection-type cases, the, the regulators who work for the city government are trained to not only, in, not only recognize discrepancies in the code, they're also trained in dispute resolution on the spot, but in the end, at the end of that inspection, that inspection is complete. And I, I would, I would just like to put that out there. I mean, if the board wants to direct staff to have a dispute resolution, something more formal, and information doesn't get released to the public, we'll obviously be happy to do that, if that's what you recommend, or if that's what you direct. My recommendation is not to do that. If there's a problem with an inspector, with training, with maybe an inconsistent enforcement of standards, things like that, we can take care of that situation, but to keep an inspection up in the air, that would be unprecedented. We don't do it in the building department, we don't do it with a fire marshal, we don't do it with any other type of inspection. So, I think I would just, I would caution that. I don't think we've ever had a restaurant owner come and dispute findings, correct me if I'm wrong, I can't remember any. I mean, they, they made dispute, whether it was a dead mouse on the floor or not, but...
If there was a dispute after you've already published, and you found that there was an error in the inspection, that would become the new public record anyways, wouldn't it?
Correct.
Let me ask you one more question. If you have to do a re-inspection, how long before the re-inspection is published?
So, once again, that, it's, so some re-inspections are just, we, we go out and validate that it's done, and it's not scored, so it depends on the seriousness of that, if there's, of which, why, why we have to go out and do a re-inspection, but it's normally within 24 to 48 hours. But sometimes some establishments want a, a re-inspection, and then they request a formal re-inspection, and we usually set that at, at a specific date and time. So, if that particular establishment needs five days to correct it, and they want that inspection five days later, then that would be five days later when that re-inspection occurred.
Well, I hope nobody takes what I'm asking here as any advocacy that things be cloaked from the public. That's not the way I feel. Perhaps I just make a suggestion from me, the Board of Health may not agree with me, the rest of the Board of Health, but perhaps there should be somewhere in which the party who's been inspected can write up his views and that be included, or does that make any sense to you?
You know, and I, as I think through that, John, I'm wondering why we would do that? I mean, because we've got an official report, the, what, what does it add to that report to have somebody who's not associated with the city add their, their comments to that report, to an official report? I mean, I can see it where, you know, somebody, they appeal it or whatever they want to do, but I don't know that publishing a rebuttal, you know, even call it an on-site rebuttal, does much for us. As a matter of fact, I, I think it kind of works, more I think about it, works against us, but, not us, but...
Well, once you're hanged, you're dead.
And if I could just add, as, you know, as we're talking here, we're talking about publishing the results of the reports, and what we're trying to do with the placard system is, these will be posted right at the facility, and so, the public, and something that they were looking at, is having an option from these placards, that the public can go and look further into the inspection report. So, it would be immediate notification, and not having to wait on it being published somewhere. So, like, to your question, Karen, if it's a reinspection, that would be posted immediately.
Thank you. I'm sure we will entertain more digestive conversation as time goes by.
Well, I think, as we go through this, it'd be nice to know the pros and cons of being able to add a rebuttal that's attached to the report and published as the report goes out itself. And I'd just like to know what, you know, the pros and cons of that.
Does that happen, you're saying, though, Nick, that that doesn't happen in other types of inspections within the city purview?
No, ma'am. Now, again, they're different, they're not, if we come in and do a building inspection, that doesn't become, we don't release it to the Nevada Appeal. So, I understand the nature of restaurant inspections are slightly different, it does become public information, it does directly affect people's businesses, and we understand that. And I think that's why we've taken a very careful and a very cautious approach to how we write up these inspection results. There's information that, you know, that the inspector and the business owner discuss on-site, so, I mean, I think the inspectors are already pretty aware of the responsibility that they have.
That was an informational report, as I said, we will most likely hear more as time goes by. I'll go on to item 23C.
Do we need a motion on this? We don't?
No, it was just an informational, I believe. Item 23C is a discussion and, or presentation, and then some feedback from the board on the opioid abuse project that we recently received a grant from. Nikki?
Yeah.
Sandy?
Hello. For the record, Sandy Warko at Carson City Health and Human Services. So, we're going to give you guys a presentation about the opioid epidemic here nationally, Nevada, and in Carson City. This is my coworker, Celeste Perini, she has been tasked with working on this project, and she has really been the boots on the ground to get this moving in our community, and partnering with our providers, with our law enforcement, and with our marketing and media campaigns. So, we're going to give this presentation, you're welcome to stop me and ask questions, or you can ask questions at the end. But, do we have an opioid epidemic problem in Nevada? Do we have that in Carson City? Yes, we do. So, we wanted just to remind everybody about what the Board of Health mission is, and it really is to enhance the public health and welfare by evaluating the needs of the community, promoting health awareness, and assessing the availability of health-related services to those in need. So, what we're doing with this opioid project really meets all of these missional statement items for the Board of Health. So, what does it look like? So, obviously, I think everybody is well aware, it's been at the federal government level, that we do indeed have an opioid problem in our nation. And if you look at Nevada, we're ranked 16th in the U.S. overall for overdoses. However, we are ranked fourth when it comes to overdoses that result in death. Not a good number. The number of drug overdoses have increased by 80% since 1999, and the majority of these have been prescription drugs. That continues to be our problem still in Nevada, is the prescription drugs, although there are a lot of other drugs that are coming into that, and we'll talk about that, where once they are being denied for their prescription drugs, many of them are turning to heroin to continue their addiction. Now, we're starting to see, huh?
I have a question about that.
Sure.
I know that a lot of, I'm sorry, I apologize. A lot of our medical profession, I'm going to just call it that, has gotten on board. These rankings, these numbers are based on what year?
So, most of these are going, you're going to see some slides. So, a lot of the numbers that we're dealing with now, we're looking at 2010 to 2015 numbers, we really don't have a lot of 2016 numbers yet.
I think it's also important to realize that, when it says prescription, I think the implication is that was prescribed for that person, but a significant amount, and I don't know the exact number, a significant amount are diverted, what we would consider diverted prescriptions or diverted drugs. So, that's, you know my feelings on this, but I think that when Sandy and Celeste are talking about prescriptions, they were prescribed, or are a controlled substance available in a pill bottle, but it's not necessarily being used appropriately for that person.
Okay, so, and then, moving down, Nevada ranks second highest in the U.S. for prescriptions for hydrocodone and for oxycodone. So, we really have a prescribing problem in Nevada. I don't know if it's on that other slide with the U.S., but for, as far as the U.S. goes nationally, we prescribe 90% of the world's opioids in the United States. That's huge. I mean, we're obviously very liberal here with our pain meds.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Doesn't that relate to how pain management is dealt with?
Yes.
And why isn't alternative medicine recommended more than prescription drugs?
And so, you'll see, a lot of what we are doing is, we are going into providers' offices and giving in-person trainings, and part of that in-person training is the new CDC guidelines for prescribing, both for chronic pain and acute pain. And when you're prescribing for that chronic pain, the recommendations are now for alternative pain meds and treatment therapies. So, more focused on some of the holistic treatments, if that's acupuncture, is it hypnosis, is it massage therapy, is it chiropractor therapy? So, those are now, in those CDC guidelines, one of the things that we have run across in working with providers, is that although those are the recommendations, insurance has not gotten on board with paying for those treatment therapies, or paying for those alternative pain meds that cost more money, and so, the insurance is, no, we won't cover that, because you can get your Vicodin for much cheaper, and we'll cover the Vicodin. So, there still is a lot of work with the battle of what is recommended and what insurance is going to cover. So, this slide, as you can see, it has a huge economic impact, this is national dollars, so $55 billion in health and social costs is related to this abuse problem, $120 billion in emergency department and inpatient care for overdoses. So, a lot of dollars are being thrown to this epidemic. All right, so, here is another statistic for Nevada. There was 80.7 opioid prescriptions per 100 people written in Nevada in 2016. So, of the 100 people that were written prescriptions for pain medicine, 80.7 are getting opiates, where, if you look at California, who has probably started their program of prevention earlier than we have, they're at 44.8. Is that a great number? No, that's still not a great number, but it's much lower than Nevada. So, you can see why Nevada has a problem. In 2014, and you're going to see some other graphs, but in 2014, there were 224 deaths contributed to this prescription drug overdose, and in 2015, that number went up to 259, and we don't yet have 2016 data. So, we anticipate that it will probably have risen, based on what we're kind of hearing from that 259.
And again, that's just from prescription drugs, not like heroin or the other illicit drugs. So, we have more overdoses from, wow.
Yeah. Yeah, those are just from the prescription drug overdoses. So, just to try to give you a little bit of what this all looks like, and we have been talking with and working with law enforcement, but not only is heroin something that they go to from their prescriptions to the illicit drugs, but fentanyl is a prescription drug. However, fentanyl is coming into the United States at a very alarming growing rate, and although you may have people prescribed fentanyl, much of what's coming in is illegal from the dark web, where they can buy it, have it shipped and mailed to their houses, and it's usually in a powder form. It's much like flour or powdered sugar-based, but very, very dangerous. Some of the fentanyl, this is regular fentanyl, some fentanyl that's coming in is carfentil, is one of the terms, and that's what's used for, the vets use that for elephants, or for large breed animals. So, it's 100 times stronger than the fentanyl. But this gives you an idea, of 1 mg of fentanyl is equal to 66 mg of oxycodone, or 1,000 mg of codeine. So, this is alarming that this fentanyl is going to start showing up. And in fact, Canada no longer says they have an opioid problem, as in prescription drugs, they have a fentanyl problem. And that's what they're seeing, is all fentanyl in Canada. So, it's working its way down to the United States. So, here is some Carson City-specific data that we were able to get from the state. As you can see, we had a little bump in 2013, but then we're right back, and then went down in 24 and back up in 2015 with opioid-related deaths in Carson City. So, these are deaths that are reported to the state that were Carson City residents.
Carson City residents, or treated in Carson City?
People who died in Carson City.
Right. So, that could encumber the entire region.
Yeah, could encounter tri-county. This is the data for the opioid poisonings, as far as the emergency department, what they are seeing. And the law has recently changed now, in 2015, or 2017, that is going to mandate that health agencies report overdoses, all overdoses, to the state. So, this is data that we're able to get when we request the data, but it is not mandatory that people report the data. It is now mandatory that it gets reported. So, as you can see, you know, really, the opiates and narcotics, our Vicodins, our oxycodones, our Percocets, are still our highest number of encounters. And then, you know, heroin is kind of right in the middle, so, as people start to not be able to get their opiates, then often, they will turn to heroin, some of them start with heroin. It's cheaper than prescriptions, if you're buying them on the black market. Inpatient admissions, as you can see, this does create, that goes back to that economic impact, but you can see that these poisonings do create inpatient admissions due to the overdose and the significance of that overdose. And you see methadone on here, methadone is considered a treatment modality for opioids. So, but however, if they are not using their methadone exactly as prescribed, that's when we start to see the overdoses from methadone. And methadone is quite strong, it's actually stronger than Vicodin and, you know, Percocet, but it is the treatment of choice right now for addiction. Emergency department, this is by age, and if you kind of go back to 2010, you can see where our addicts have just gotten older. So, they started to become addicts in that 15 to 24 age range, and then, as the years have gone by, now it is our 25 to 34-year-olds that have that highest increase in opioid-related visits. It's really not too surprising, but a lot of visits. All right, so, what is some of the background to what's happening with this? So, what is an opioid? There's a lot of education and terminology that is coming out, we've been going to a lot of conferences on this, and true opiates, the things that come truly from the poppy plant, is opium, codeine, morphine, heroin. Our synthetic opioids are things like the fentanyl, the oxycodone, hydrocodone, and so, those other names that fall into those, Vicodin, Norco, Percocet. So, that's, those are examples of some of the names of the opioid drugs. So, why is it so addictive? Because these drugs attach themselves to the receptors in the brain that produce a reward system, the dopamine, much like nicotine does with tobacco smokers. So, it attaches to that, those receptors, and those receptors send out large amounts of dopium, or dopamine. And that's what gives people that pleasure feeling, that high. Sometimes, you know, that high is only the first couple times they use a drug, but after that, they still have those receptors wanting that drug to fill that. They may not get the same high, but they still get some of the pleasure feeling from that. The other part with opiates, though, is they attack the lower part of your brain that regulates breathing and heart rate, and that's where, when you have higher levels, that's what affects the overdose. So, when those respirations slow down, the heart rate slows down to a point that it doesn't sustain life, then you end up with an overdose, or death. So, many factors are relevant to how this is going to affect people's brain, sometimes it's just simply their brain chemistry, their genetics, and what type of drug they're using, and how fast. You can have people who only, even for acute pain, if we are encouraging them to only prescribe for three to five days for acute pain, that is long enough sometimes for some people to become addicted. So, as Governor Sandoval has been charging this matter, and trying to really get Nevada on board with, what can we do? You know, he did release a statement that says, at least one person in Nevada dies every single day from an opioid overdose. We can and we must do better. So, what are some of the things that is being done? One thing that was passed in 2015 was the Good Samaritan Drug Overdose Act. Basically, this just allows healthcare providers to prescribe Narcan, they can give it to the patient, to the friend, the family, and they have no liability for whether the Narcan worked or didn't work. And we are doing a lot of education to providers to say, prescribe Narcan, prescribe Narcan. There are several pharmacies now, national pharmacies, that actually have an over-the-counter program for Narcan. So, Smiths, Walgreens, CVS, they all have over-the-counter programs for Narcan, meaning that if I'm a mother, and I'm concerned, because I know my son uses heroin, I can go in and get Narcan. I don't need a prescription, I don't need to see a provider, I can go get Narcan and have it there. With that, we're trying to make sure that the message is, if you're giving Narcan to these people over the counter, you are being sure to say, they still have to call 911, because that Narcan's going to wear off in, you know, 20, 30 minutes, and they're going to be in the same boat they were when you administered it the first time. And because these drugs have become... And because these drugs have become so potent, we're finding in the emergency rooms that often it's three and four doses of Narcan before they are safe and able to breathe on their own. So it is a problem. And I already talked a little bit about this, but the CDC has released opioid prescribing guidelines, especially for chronic pain. And so we are going out, we are making sure providers are aware of these guidelines. We are assisting them with how can they use these guidelines in their practice? Are they dealing with chronic pain? Are they dealing with acute pain? What are those guidelines looking? And then we go as far as pushing them to actually put in policies into their practice about using the guidelines. So we give them examples of policies that they can use. In addition, in 2017, we had some changes to NRS. And most of that has to do with now providers must review the Nevada Prescription Drug Monitoring Program prior to prescribing any new medication or anything over how many days? Like if it's new, is it over, if they are giving 10-day supply, 30-day supply?
It's over seven.
Over seven days, yeah. So they have to go in and look at this. And what the Prescription Drug Monitoring Program does is it tells us if their doctor's shopping, basically. It says, how many prescriptions have you gotten over the last couple of months and how many have you received? And having worked in the ER, you know, it's amazing to see that, oh, you got 300 of those a week ago, you know, and then you got 40 from another doc, and then you got 20 from another doc. So it's starting to crack down on that and able to confront patients to say, we will not give you anymore. You have more than enough. The law also requires that the pharmacist who dispensed the pain medications, that they have to put in what they dispensed into this Prescription Drug Monitoring Program by the next business day. So most of the time, that's within 24 hours, that information should be in the system so the next provider knows what they received the day before, a week before. We are finding that our providers have told us, we've gone in there, there's been no update for months, and they know it because they're prescribing. So we have been talking with the State Board of Pharmacy to alert them that there are some pharmacies here in town that are not getting their information in a timely fashion. So, I mean, that's good because we're hearing from our providers and we're able to go back and try to say, here's a barrier and this is what needs to change. So what else are we doing? So we have opioid toolkits, and we brought a couple of the toolkits that we go out to providers with. We actually provide them with a toolkit, has all the information in here, and we go over all this information with them. So we have examples if you guys would like to see those. We try to do all of our education in person. We just find that that way, there's two-way dialogue, they can ask us questions, we can hear in between what their barriers are so that we can say, is that something you'd like us to try to address? And so that dialogue is so important versus just, hey, hand this to your provider, and yeah, will it ever get there? So we are doing that. We have hit well over 20 providers now. We have actually already been asked by UNR, School of Madison, to come and train their residents because they are not getting all of this training as well. So we're hoping to set those dates, especially if we can get continued funding to do our projects. We've gone out to Southline Medical Center and done their entire healthcare providers out there through staff meetings. So we're really trying to get that. Pharmacist, we found that dealing with pharmacists has been interesting. They don't see their role in this epidemic. They feel like their role is just to dispense medications, and a lot of them don't even carry Narcan. They'll say, well, you know, we're not comfortable giving Narcan. You know, I don't know if we, you know, can, you know, educate them on that. And we're like, no, that's your job. You need to do this. And Narcan's harmless. Narcan is a harmless medication. It only works on an opiate overdose. If that's not the problem, it's not going to hurt anybody. There are no side effects to it. So we're really trying to get out there and say, they have a role in this epidemic.
Who is educating the health insurance companies?
Nobody that I know of at this time.
That seems to be a serious issue. It's a serious disconnect.
It is. And I think that probably where, it's not that discussions haven't happened about that. It's like, whose responsibility is that? And, you know, insurance companies are big, but I think, you know, the place to start always is Medicaid because we have such a large number of recipients on Medicaid that the state needs to really say, you know, they need to be talking state-to-state level about that. And then usually, if we can get CMS to change, the other insurance companies often will follow. We have been working in partnership with law enforcement through trainings as well as finding out what their barriers are. What are they dealing with? What do they need? We know that there have been fentanyl exposures to law enforcement, and what does that look like to get our law enforcement people protected in the event that they had an exposure? And so we've been talking, do we want to have Narcan? Do they want to have Narcan for patrol or for the drug enforcement agencies so that if they have an exposure, they can treat at least each other? So we've been working with them and then, of course, looking for dollars that will help pay for that. But the other part of law enforcement has a barrier that law enforcement has shared with us is that the judicial system needs to be educated about this epidemic and what's going on. And so in the future, we would like to do some trainings and education to our judicial So gaps, some of the gaps I've kind of already talked about, it's really this Narcan availability and education. You know, when somebody comes in desperate for Narcan and the doc gives them a prescription and then the pharmacist says, well, we'll get that in three days. Three days, it could be dead. So we're really saying, no, you need to have it in stock. Three days isn't okay. Education about that chronic pain treatment. What is really warranted? Is it medications? Is it alternative treatments? And really pushing that they need to be exercising that. And Dr. Demuro at the state is really big about educating the providers about correct diagnosis, you know, not to just say, oh, they have chronic back pain. Why do they have back pain? To get down to what is causing that back pain and not just say, chronic back pain, and just keep giving medications. And then we've created an educational campaign that addresses the prevention of addiction and the danger of sharing opioids. So our campaign is, if you care, don't share. So we're trying to tell the public that if you have prescription medications that belong to you, do not share them. And sometimes it's as benign as, you know, somebody, you know, fell at somebody else's house and they're like, oh, yeah, I have a little bit of vicodin left over. Let me give you one of those. That works really well. You know, well, that only takes out one sometimes. So all of it, if you care, don't share. Lock it up. It belongs to you. So part of this campaign, and we are actually professionally having these infographics done, but it's stop the crisis, if you care, don't share, and we have probably about 10 different facts on each one of these infographics. If you follow us on Facebook, they've already started to go out on our Facebook and Twitter, but we are, if you care, don't share, and why is that important? Why do we need to stop the crisis? And there's facts on each one of those. And that is it. If you guys have any other questions?
I do. I have a question. So as this becomes more and more successful, do you see an issue with people that will go into withdrawals and we have the ability to help them?
So you mean like because we're having providers not prescribe? So every time that we are talking with providers, when they're going to be confronted with that situation, we give them a full referral sheet to get those people to treatment, if that's outpatient, inpatient. Most of the providers in our tri-county area had no idea there was a methadone clinic right here in town or a treatment center. They had no idea. So that is part of our talks is that, yeah, you can't just cut somebody off without making sure that they're going to be cared for.
So yes, you think we have sufficient resources for the...
No, I don't think we have sufficient resources. But do we have resources? Yes. They're very hard to get into. Most of them are booked, and there's just not enough that take our uninsured and Medicaid populations. So that's where we're insufficient. I know the state is working on that, though. They've received a large grant specific to increasing treatment facilities.
Because I really do see it hand in hand.
Absolutely.
You need both pieces to make it successful.
Yeah, we created...
Because they'll just move to a different drug. So, I mean, the objective is to actually...
Yeah, we, you know, we have to recognize that we somewhat created this epidemic and therefore we have to take care of these people who we've put in this situation.
Well, I think there's more than the two pieces, as you say. I think that Karen brings up a very good point is that the economics of it are people are forced to choose. I don't say that they're forced, but they choose based on what's cheap.
Yes.
And until that dynamic changes, it's going to be difficult to address the whole problem.
Which is my question, because you have connection with the state agencies as well.
Correct.
And if Medicaid is the conduit through which the conversation can start, can you start that conversation?
We can certainly be talking with our state partners who, they won't let us just go talk to Medicaid. Yeah. So we can have that type of a conversation. I think from watching Dr. Demuro do a recent webinar to providers, he's kind of starting to see this piece of the puzzle already. So I think that he, and he would have the ability to say, this needs to be a priority. We need to work on this. And he can assign people to work on that. And we are always happy to help. We've gone many times to Medicaid and talked to them on other issues that we've brought to the state's forefront because of some discrepancies with Medicaid barriers, yeah.
And I just have to really commend these two, Sandy and Celeste, for putting together this program. And it's just been within the last couple of months that this program has been put together. And as you heard Sandy say, they've already went out and talked to 20 different providers. And so they've done a great job. And the reason I really wanted this topic to come to the Board of Health is this was a grant that we received, a very small grant. They've developed this program. We saw the importance and the strides that we were making within this problem, and we went to the state and we're looking for funding. We may have an option through Partnership Carson City. So you may see this come back again through the Board of Supervisors on accepting a grant at some point, so.
Kathy Bartos, can you come up for a second?
Bring Hannah. Bring Hannah.
Oh, me too?
Hannah's young. About how far back did we begin educating our pharmacists and doctors about this opioid?
A year and a half ago. For the record, this is Kathy Bartos with Partnership Carson City. A year and a half ago, we hired Valerie Kane, who is a retired school nurse, and she went to 182 of the different physicians within the Carson City and Douglas County area and a couple in Lyon County. And she trained them in the PDMP, and we made the little signs that they go in their windows, little window clings, excuse me, that go in their windows saying, we are a PDMP looker. We look at it. And so if you're coming in here to, you know, pull over our eyes, this is the wrong place to go. So, yeah, it's been about a year and a half.
And those are still continuing?
We've gotten everybody so far. There's about 10 that have moved in since Valerie's contract ended. She's now working on other projects, but they're easily taken care of, and she said she would go out to anybody. And when the law changed, she sent out a letter to everyone indicating that now it was the law. It was no longer just recommended. And they helped us with the wording on that.
She is also partnering with some of our outlying communities who need help with finding someone who would have the same position as them. So Lyon County is looking to hire someone in their coalition that would do the same thing that Valerie did for us.
Did her scope of work include pharmacies?
No, they did not. We did do a separate training with the sheriff's office. They came out and did an excellent training for 65 of our pharmacies, and we talked about the PDMP. And the other thing that they were looking at was how to engage law enforcement if you suspect that there's a fake prescription being handed to you. And they gave some very good clues on their certain products, the people who are looking at the size of the syringe that they're looking for, how they dress, certain products that they're specifically submitting a prescription for. So that was really valuable. And like I said, we had 65 pharmacy people. I think you guys were there too. So that was very, it was the sheriff's office and Public Safety Narcotics Division.
And Carson City remains the only place in Nevada where you can incinerate, or excuse me, any drug out of your home?
Yes, sir.
No, I understand the AG's office is working on passing or amending certain rules and regulations along that path so that every county can facilitate drug disposal out of the home. Is that right?
I don't know if the AG's office, their direction is for any drug to be incinerated as much as the dollars are coming from grant dollars for opioid crisis. So I don't know how that's going to all fall into place because the grant money is specific more to opioids and getting it with these communities, drop-off locations and incinerators.
So if we don't encourage the AG's office to open it up to all drugs, then we're going to fail?
Possibly. I don't know that they were going to come and say, are you only picking out the opiates, you know? I don't see that. I think they're just trying to get the dollars to the hands of the communities to have these incinerators and drop-off locations.
I think part of the other issue too is, you know, we do the prescription drug roundups, but now with the advent of fentanyl and the possibility of serious damage and illness occurring if you even touch the powder of fentanyl, that we're looking at, our roundups are handled by volunteers. So we're now thinking about, they always wear gloves and whatnot, but Hannah got a call from the DEA this morning about extra precautions on the roundups. If you want to just tell them briefly?
So we have been advised from the DEA to no longer allow anyone to open up their bottles at the drug roundups, which Carson City really hasn't done before. We always kind of just say, drop your bottle, put it in, we don't want to touch it. But there's always those people who don't want to leave their bottle, they don't feel comfortable doing that. But we have been severely warned across all of Nevada that we can no longer open bottles, let people put them into plastic baggies. If they want to do that, they need to do that in the home, and they need to drop their products on their own. So instead of us touching them, unless the individual is unable to drop it for themselves. So if they, you know, can't get out of their car or what have you. But we are definitely working toward the caution of fentanyl and just really seeing where that takes us. But we do need the possibility of incineration outside of opiates because we see more things get dropped off to us than just opiates. We have benzos and even just regular prescriptions that people just want to make sure are destroyed properly.
Thank you, ladies. I appreciate it. And I do, I want to echo that. I'm very appreciative of the work you two are doing. It's not easy to try and get a doctor to talk to you. And Sandy is quite persistent and quite pleasant about it, I must say.
Sometimes we just stand at the counter and they can keep walking by us, but we're not leaving until you've talked to us.
I appreciate that. So that report was for our information. I don't think it requires any approval. I don't think it requires any approval. I would ask again if there's any other public comment that would like to be given to the Board of Health? And if not, a motion for adjournment?
I move adjourn.
We're gone. Goodbye.
We'll be in recess in about 10 minutes and the Board of Supervisors will come back and take up, and we'll take up the last item for today, and that's the first reading of the marijuana ordinance.
All right, the Board of Supervisors will come back to order if we could kind of take your conversation out in the hall and be appreciated. All right, we're now going to take up the last item on our agenda for today, and that is item 27 Alpha. This is to introduce on first reading ordinance relating to marijuana. Who's going to do this? Learn at Hand or Lee Plummel?
Good afternoon. Lee Plummel, Community Development Director. Dan Yu at the District Attorney's Office is also here.
Dan Yu. I thought it was Learn at Hand. Okay, go ahead.
And he will help us answer, help answer your questions regarding the ordinance. This is an ordinance relating to the Title 18 zoning provisions relating to marijuana. It is significantly in the format and form that was before you previously, but we've made some changes, and I'm just going to briefly go over kind of a little bit of the background to catch everybody up to speed and then go over what the provisions of this ordinance include. Just a little bit of background to start with, remember, we've got direction to implement recreational marijuana provisions that are similar to our existing medical marijuana ordinance provisions, so that was done. On July 20th, the Board of Supervisors adopted an ordinance that allowed existing medical marijuana cultivation, production, and distributors to get business licenses to do the wholesale portion of recreational marijuana. So we currently have, here's an important point to note through this discussion as you see later, but, so we do have businesses that are not retail stores, that are in the wholesale business with recreational marijuana currently as a result of that ordinance. Pertaining specifically to this ordinance before you today, the Planning Commission reviewed it on July 26th of this year and recommended approval by a vote of five to one, and on August 3rd was the first time that this ordinance was brought before the Board for first reading. At that August 3rd meeting, there were two changes and maybe a third minor change in there that were made. The first being that that proposed ordinance had marijuana distributors as a permitted use within the limited industrial zoning district. The recommended action by the Board at that time unanimously was to take marijuana distributors out of the limited industrial zoning districts, so this ordinance reflects that change. Another change that was made by you on first reading was to delay the start of marijuana retail stores to January 1st, 2018, so that verbiage is also in the new ordinance. And a more minor issue was, that was pointed out, was conflict in the definition of co-location in 1803 and the term as it was used for the co-location of specific types of marijuana establishments, for example, the medical marijuana distributor and the retail store. So Dan came up with the term, so to do that, instead of using the term co-location for the marijuana facilities, they are jointly located. I think that's the correct term, and there's no pun intended there. Sorry. And, let's see, so with the change, and in particular with the change, so most of the existing businesses would be permitted to continue to operate under the proposed ordinance as it is. The exception to that is the marijuana distributors of which we have one, as, just again, go backing up a little bit, state law allows licensed liquor distributors to apply to be the marijuana distributors. They created a new category of marijuana establishment, which is marijuana distributors, and we have one business in Carson City that has that license and is located in the limited industrial zoning district. The effect of the ordinance as introduced to you initially, and I don't, I've taken them out, was that that business would immediately have to cease upon second reading. With the combination of all these things, and particularly with the delay of retail marijuana establishments to January 1st, we weren't in any rush to bring this ordinance back to get, everybody who can have a license has a license, so this is back before you for first reading and not second reading because of the time difference. To address that issue and other issues, I'll also note that there are some other technical corrections that we've identified within here, some other things that are being pointed out that are non-substantive. One that I would like to specifically point out is on page 58 of the ordinance related to limited industrial zoning district, and this was pointed out to us by Supervisor Bagwell. So the way our zoning ordinance works is that things in what we might call the lower zoning district carry over to the next zoning district unless they're specifically excluded. So because marijuana retail stores and medical marijuana dispensaries are permitted in general commercial, we think to be clear, we want to, in that LI section, we're going to put those medical marijuana distribution and marijuana retail store as listed as a prohibited use, just to be clear. I think arguably ahead of that, the verbiage in general commercial is pretty specific to general commercial, but for zoning and everything, we're going to make that technical correction, so I just want to point that out for the record. I don't think that needs to be part of your action. It doesn't substantively change what we're doing here. Let's see, so with all those corrections and update of where we are, we have presented an ordinance to you that makes those changes, and then the one thing I think we need to talk about, and where I provided some alternatives, is the grandfathering, is do we allow the continuation or grandfathering of any existing operational businesses within a district that would then be prohibited by the adoption of this new ordinance? The alternative that's one that's been presented in this ordinance is to allow the continuation of those businesses, which again, we're talking about one business in the limited industrial zoning district. To allow, the first recommended, the first alternative in here is to allow them till April 1st, 2018. I provided some alternatives, I provided the rationale for each in here that you have and consider, I'll just go over them briefly, but the rationale behind that date is that you adopted a temporary ordinance in July that allowed them to have a business license, that was the expiration date of that temporary ordinance and those temporary business licenses, so that date would coincide with that. That's the rationale for that version of any grandfathering option. You can consider other alternatives, and just briefly going through them as they're in here, as I've noted in here, alternative two would be to not allow any grandfathering, that as of the adoption of the ordinance on second reading, all facilities would have to come into compliance with zoning immediately. Alternative three being, kind of the converse of that, is that any operation that is legally existing now would be continued to operate indefinitely under our legal non-conforming provisions of the Municipal Code 1804030, which allows uses to continue as long as they stay there and as long as they continue and are not terminated for more than 12 months. Further provides that they can be expanded, but only by special use permit. And then, of course, the last alternative, it could be a range of things, as noted in here, you could pick another period of time in which they would be grandfathered to continue operation, after which they'd have to come into full compliance with the zoning ordinance. I think that's a summary of where we are. Again, a lot of this, I won't go over all of the points because we went through that previously on the first reading, I think we've got to a point where we have some consensus on the provisions of the ordinance, but I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time, and Dan's also here to help me with questions.
Supervisor Rayboud.
Dan or Lee? In order for complete clarity, if, as you know, and through much discussion, we want all of our rules and regulations to adhere to what the medical marijuana regulations are, and which alternative allows for, exclusive of the date, everyone complying to medical marijuana regulations, and I would say January 1st to keep it a consistent date? Is alternative one the best one for us to consider with regards to all the discussion we've had regarding this?
You know, I'm going to try to answer that question as best I understand the question to be. I think for the most part, that's really sort of a policy-related approach in terms of what would be best or most appropriate here in terms of grandfathering or not grandfathering in any sort of an existing establishment at this point in time. Now, that being said, I mean, from the DA's office, we don't really have, you know, a position with respect to what the city ought to do from a legal perspective if you wanted consistency across the board. I would really say that, you know, these options here that are enumerated in the staff report really kind of capture the wide range of options that you have. For example, what's submitted on the record today within the agenda packet as the proposed language, as Lee alluded to a minute ago, is the April 1st, 2018 date. The rationale behind that, you know, at risk of being redundant here, and I'll just reemphasize this for the record, is because of the sequencing of events that have occurred over the last several weeks or months with respect to our various revisions. So as you'll recall, we had the short, what I like to call colloquially as the short version of the Title IV ordinance, which allowed for the business licensing on the local level here of all establishments other than retail establishments. Then we had the Title 18 ordinance for consideration and review as well. Because there was an overlap of everything, what happened as a result of that was, in the middle, I would say of this transitioning process, there was the issuance, based on my understanding of the facts, at the local level of a business license to a distributor of retail marijuana to exist in limited industrial. So what's being contemplated here today is a broader range, I would say, approach of what are we going to do with Title 18 with respect to zoning? And then what's going to be heard on first reading immediately after this agenda is what are we going to do with the business licensing portion of it? I don't want to get too much into that because I want to kick that down for the next, you know, agenda title. That one also includes, you know, a specific clause with respect to the issuance of licenses. This one here, what we're really focused in on is the grandfathering, or the potential grandfathering in. So hopefully that answers your question. I know I'm not giving you an explicit answer as to what would be the best date. I think, you know, unfortunately, that's something I'm going to have to kind of pump back to the Board of Supervisors on.
What's the legal effect, if you can answer, on making the date change that Supervisor Rayboud mentioned?
Mr. Mayor, I think that's a great question. I appreciate having the opportunity to answer that. Based on my legal research, and I will say for the record that this was not exhaustive by any means, based on some preliminary research that I was able to find, it's my view that as a local government, Carson City is not required under a substantive due process analysis to provide what's called an amortization period. As you'll recall, when we initially brought to this Board our proposed language for Title IV and for Title 18, we had included specifically at the Board's direction, how far can we go? What's the extent of local government's authority in being able to quote-unquote "zone out" certain businesses? So what we had included in that language was something to the effect of, any person who is the holder of a license that's issued to operate as a retail marijuana establishment does not acquire thereby from this issuance a vested property right, quote-unquote, right? And also, we added an additional verbiage to specify that this is not a, or, I'm sorry, to specify that it is in fact a privileged revocable license. Now, subsequent to that, I was able to find some case law that I believe, in my personal opinion, and I've not fully vetted this with the District Attorney, so I just want to establish that for the record, my opinion is that it puts us on pretty solid ground with the position that it is within our local zoning powers as a local governmental entity to zone out specifically any business, even if it's currently in existence, because of the fact that we've included specific language saying that this is a revocable license and you're not acquiring a vested property right, and that affords enough protection, I believe.
Okay. Supervisor Barrett.
My understanding is, though, that this business license was issued until April 1st of 2018, correct?
That's correct. Under the current existing ordinances that we have, which was the one that's, and this is for the benefit of the public in case anybody wants to go online and look at our municipal code provisions, it has not been codified in a Carson City municipal code, but that was the latest ordinance that was adopted, and that says everything expires by limitation on April 1st, 2018. That's an express sunset clause.
Gotcha. So I guess, just to go right on the record right away, I think probably that April 1st date sort of makes sense to me. He has to move it by then. That gives him some time, and that's what he was looking, how he was basing his business judgment, correct?
You know, again, I just don't want to stray too far outside of my lane. I want to stay squarely within my legal lane of answering legal questions. I think, again, with all due respect, Supervisor, I think that's more of a policy consideration to be made.
Lee, any input there?
No, that's the rationale for that alternative as expressed in there. Thank you.
All right. Other question from the Board? Dan, recently in the news, there's been talk about pot store, or pot lounges and events. What's the DA doing on all those?
The District Attorney, Jason Webbery, and myself, we have been looking into the issue. We have had an opportunity to review thoroughly that recent legal advisory opinion that was issued by the Legislative Council Bureau. We believe that there are some unanswered issues that need to be resolved that were not specifically addressed within that opinion letter. The short answer is, we're continuing to look into that at this point in time.
I think the Board would like to take that discussion up as soon as you guys have a legal analysis, and from my own personal viewpoint, I think it's, you know, I'm in line with what the Governor's saying on this stuff, so, all right?
Absolutely.
All right. Anybody else? Public comment? Anybody? Mr. Benson, good afternoon.
For the record, my name is Kevin Benson. I'm with the Allison McKenzie Firm, and I am representing Paladin LLC, which is a licensed marijuana distributor. And I just want to address a couple issues with the new ordinance that's before you today, and I realize, I fully understand what occurred at the August 3rd meeting and the decision that was made there, and so I don't want to take up a lot of your time, but I do want to address some of the concerns that were raised at that meeting. And we do want to propose a alternative that I think would address many of those concerns and also would allow a business to keep operating where it's at and, you know, strike that balance between the two. And really, the reason that we're proposing this is based on the difference between marijuana distributors and other types of marijuana establishments. And so just to be very, very clear, what we're proposing would not affect the other marijuana establishments in any way, either medical or on the recreational side, only limiting this to distributors. And so with that being said, I think the differences are really substantial in the sense...
Kevin, can I ask you a question as you go on? I don't mean to, I know what it's like to have somebody step on your conversation there. Is Paladin making distributions today?
My understanding is yes, they are.
All right.
And so, but the main difference between the two, as I'm sure you know, it's been discussed, is that a distributor for marijuana does not buy and sell marijuana. In fact, they're prohibited from doing so under the current statute. And so this is significantly different from alcohol distribution, for example, where you would buy it and warehouse it at the place and then sell it to another, to a retailer. Under the regulations and under the statute, the distributors are actually prohibited from keeping marijuana on-site. Their job is to take it from a cultivator or a production facility to a retail store or to some other marijuana establishment. It's a point A to point B type of transaction. And so there is a provision that if there is an exigent circumstance of some kind that prevents them from making that point A to point B transaction, under those circumstances, they can store it temporarily, perhaps overnight. If that happens, they have to notify the Department of Taxation within two hours of the event, what happened, how they're going to fix it, you know, how much product is affected, you know, all of this, there's, I'm going to go ahead and say it, there's a lot of red tape that they have to go through every time, you know, something like that would happen, and again, it's only in extremely exigent circumstances. So the bottom line is essentially the main difference between a distributor and other marijuana establishments is that, you know, 99% of the time, there will not be marijuana at the site. That's kind of the whole point, is that it's not supposed to be there. And so because of that, we think that it presents kind of a different type of business than the other marijuana establishments, and you're not going to have, I think, the same issues and the concerns with things like theft or with, you know, the public trying to line up to buy it there or anything of that nature. So that, with that being said, we think that we can, you know, address some of the concerns because we do understand that some members of the community were concerned about how close limited industrial is to residential areas, and it does back right up to residential areas in some places, and so we understand those concerns, and so what we are proposing is that the Board reconsider its decision to take them out of limited industrial and instead put them back in or keep them in limited industrial with some additional restrictions to address those concerns. Those restrictions being that it must be at least 300 feet from any residential, and that it must be at least 1,000 feet from any school or daycare or, you know, facility of that nature. I believe there was some discussion at the last meeting about how the statute says 300 feet from daycares, but 1,000 feet from schools, and so we would propose that we just make those the same at 1,000 feet. You could also, we would also propose a potential additional restriction on that, similar to what is in the ordinance for the production cultivation facilities, which is that it be further limited only to certain parts of limited industrial, for example, east of 580, because I understand that there is, you know, there's this sort of strip of limited industrial that goes down Fairview and is very close to some residential areas. And so if it were limited to the part of limited industrial that is east of 580, then that would prevent any distributors from being in that kind of corridor that is close to the residential, to the residential uses.
Is there an issue with respect to Paladin being able to find a suitable location outside of the LI?
I'm not sure that they're, what the issues are there exactly, Mayor, but I believe that the, one of the issues is, of course, it's an established business there at the place, and that significant resources have been put into essentially building it out there at the location that it's at now.
Okay. All right.
And so that's the first thing that we would propose to the Board, and so I would be happy to answer any questions or concerns that the Board would have with regard to that proposal.
Anything? Supervisor Bagwell.
So maybe if I could just ask some more general questions so that I have an understanding of the operation of the distributorship. So, one, are there records that are kept there that tell me, as an example, in my mind here, I'm going to pick up at 8:00 AM at such-and-such a shop tomorrow, and I'm going to deliver it to such-and-such a shop by 2:00 PM? Are those records on the site? Because would that not also be something individuals would be interested in, is to find out when the deliveries are happening, what locations they're happening in? I mean, there are records and things that people might be interested in at the location.
And the quick answer to that is that I don't know, because I think it will depend on exactly the operations. They are required to have a shipping manifest and so forth, and it's very detailed, and there's also a software system that the state requires their use of, so it could be that all those are electronic depending on how the business is being run. I know that some are electronic, some are on paper.
So let me follow up on that. I didn't get the, Mr. Benson, I didn't get the full answer there. Are the records... Are the records kept? Where are the records kept? I mean, I got them on a computer, but where are the physical records? The paper records or where is that kept?
And that, Mr. Mayor, I think would probably depend on the business itself. They may be on the cloud because they're electronic, or they may be paper records that are there at the location. I think it would depend on the business.
I would assume there'd be route sheets for the drivers. I don't know, again, I don't know. People have to sign that they got it. So I'm assuming there has, maybe, maybe it is all electronic. But there'd also be a computer there with the electronic records. Not that we have any great hackers around, but I would have to assume that that is records people want access to.
All in Russia.
Yeah, they're all in Russia. But again, I just, I just want to be clear. It's not that there isn't any exposure because he's a distributor. You're just trying to indicate that you believe it's a less, less of an exposure.
That's correct. I think it's a significantly less of an exposure because for somebody to go after those records, and I agree with you, those might have value to somebody who has, who's bent on nefarious purposes. But if that's the case, they have quite a bit of work to do. They have to break in, they have to find the records, they have to hack the computer if they're electronic, and then they have to carry out their attacks somewhere down the road at a later location. It seems like an awful lot of work when they could just go to a production facility and try to break in, for example, where they know there is product. So I think that the risk that is presented is, I will not, I don't disagree, it's not there, it probably is there, but I think it's a significantly lower risk than what is presented by the other facilities. And again, because we recognize that people have concerns about its location, that's why we would propose that there be restrictions on where they can be so that they are not right next to people's houses and so forth and so on. So what we're trying to do is strike that appropriate balance to allow continuation of a business and also to address the concerns of the public that it not be in residential areas and so forth.
Okay. So then my question kind of goes to the point, though, that I think this board made it clear in all of our medical marijuana discussions, all of our retail marijuana discussions, that we wanted to concentrate these businesses in the general industrial and general commercial area. I don't think that the board has wobbled anywhere in that interpretation or discussion. And why would it be such a burden? And all the regulations and everything we wrote, we said it was temporary, we said it was revocable. And I think this board gave the impression that this is a new product line, this is something new to our community, and safety is of utmost concern, also for those in business. I think that's just as much, as you were saying, an important issue. So I don't want drivers exposed in the community either, which I would think would be the, actually, the most risky is the guy driving it around because he doesn't have the cameras and all the other neat things that the security is at a building. So I think the driver's the most at risk personally, but that's a different discussion. So why should this board make an exception for one person to do light industrial instead of complying with what we told the public and what we intended and worked on? Why should we make that change?
Well, first, I would like to address the issue with the drivers quickly if I could. And as I said before, the way the distribution works is that they take it from a cultivator production facility to a retail store or to another cultivator production facility. So the actual distribution, the actual driving, where there's product onboard is taking place in general industrial where those other entities are located. So essentially, the trucks leave the limited industrial, go to the general industrial area and do their business there, come back at night, get serviced, get stored, whatever, that sort of thing. And so the actual delivery is taking place in that general industrial area, which you've set aside for that. Secondly, the drivers are required to have substantial security requirements in the trucks. They have to be trackable by GPS. They have to have a safe or lockbox or something to keep the product in and so forth. They have to have constant communication with the facilities that they are delivering to or from. And so there are significant security built into the drivers themselves. And so I think to answer your second question is, we believe that it is, that it makes sense to make an exception in this case because of those differences, that there's almost never going to be product there. The actual delivery takes place in the areas that you have set aside for that. And that this is really, in many ways, quite a bit more restrictive even than liquor distributing, which is a primary permitted use in the limited industrial area. And so I think if we can address the concerns with it not being too close to residential and those kinds of things, then I think that it would allow the business to continue, would allow those concerns to be addressed, and would strike a good balance to reconsider that.
Mr. Benson, could you, or and Mr. You, if you would weigh in on this after you do, tell me what you believe is the problem that might crop up with precedence? If we allowed one distributor in a, in a light industrial, and then this town is growing, this industry obviously will grow, and another liquor distributor came in here and wanted to do the same thing and wanted to go into light industrial, I don't think that it would be a mushrooming situation, but do you believe this, that it's a precedent that we then be backed into?
Well, as I said, what we're asking you to do is to amend the zoning ordinance so that they would be permitted in the light industrial. So yes, another distributor could come in. They would be subject to those same restrictions on the distance and so forth, that would be part of the ordinance. And so, yes, they could come in, and we believe that that, like I said, strikes the balance not just for Paladin, but for any distributor that wanted to potentially come in. And so in terms of, I don't think that precedent is exactly the right word. I think that that would be a permitted use as we're proposing under the ordinance.
Karen?
And so to chime in, I agree with Mr. Benson's assessment of that. I don't know if what we're talking about here in terms of this approach is actually setting precedent or not setting precedent. I think what he's proposing here is option number one, you know, on behalf of his client and that industry stakeholder is to go with, we're just going to open it up in that zoning district, limited industrial, that's going to be one of the permitted uses as enumerated. Now, with precedent in the context of what would happen if we grandfathered this in, there's also no establishment of precedent because we're only going to be grandfathering in an existing location and distributor as a non-conforming use. But that also shields the city from having to open it up to anybody else because the grandfather provision in and of itself by its nature operates as carving out whatever's currently in existence for future or future adoptions of regulations and ordinances. And so we don't have to worry about opening up a new can of worms with respect to allowing or having to allow other establishments to come into limited industrial.
I guess part of my discomfort with this is it doesn't really fit the description of grandfathering something in because marijuana is a new business. It's not something that was pre-existing. I just want to put that on the record. Second of all, this is a cash business. So irregardless, when drivers are going out to drop off or to pick up, there's cash. And that cash coming back to a location does present a security issue. So that's troublesome to me, and I understand the residents that really do not want to have this near their residence. It does present a problem. And so talk to me about that.
Sure. With regard to the cash, generally, the cash is treated like the product. Somebody, a cultivator, for example, who sells to a retail store, they want their cash back quickly. So again, in typical situations, cash is not going to be stored onsite. It's going to be transacted between the buyers and the sellers, who are the cultivators and the retail stores, or the cultivators and production facilities, the other marijuana establishments. And so with regard to, I think the cash is in many ways very similar to the product itself in that typically, they are not going to be storing large amounts of cash onsite.
But the driver will be delivering cash at each stop, and in the end of the day, I assume will pay the share that is due the distributor because the distributor is also in cash. Is that correct? Everybody's in cash?
That's correct. Everybody is in cash.
And I think that, I think that's our real issue and our real concern is, this is a new business. And I think that we're just being very cautious and wanting to protect both the industry and protect the residents. And so I know that maybe to your client, it seems it won't be an issue, but I don't think all of us are convinced yet that it won't be an issue. And so I just, I think that we definitely told the distributor all along that it was general industrial or general commercial. I just don't know why it didn't go there in the first place because that's what we, as a board, indicated. So it's just a-
Mr. Benson, let me ask you. What you're asking us to do is to allow marijuana distributors in LI with a 300-foot from residents and 1,000-foot from schools. Is that what you're asking for?
Yes, that's correct. And also the daycares and the other similar locations that are identified in the statute.
East of 582, I think?
Yes, and we would additionally propose that it be limited to the limited industrial areas that are east of I-580.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Stephanie Rice. I represent Shelley Brown, the Operations Manager for Paladin. And I actually have, I think, a little bit more intimate knowledge of the operations of this facility, and I might be able to better answer some of the questions that you've presented. There is never cash stored, ever. Paladin is not paid in cash. Paladin is, is acting as a service. So, for example, it's more similar to FedEx or UPS or mailboxes, et cetera.
If that's the case, I'm getting lost on, you know, why, why there's an importance to have this particular operation in LI. I mean, because you're, what you're telling us is that this is, you know, there's no cash, there's no nothing, you don't need very many square feet, yada, yada. I mean, what, what causes the, other than the fact that Paladin is there right now, what, what is the business opposition to go into general commercial?
And I think the, candidly, the biggest problem with that is all of the requirements that it took to get this business up and operational where it is now.
And those requirements are?
They have to have 24-hour security. This is basically an office. That's all Paladin is. From standing outside, you would have no idea what was, what it was, what it did. There's no advertising. You literally can't tell what the building is. However, in approximately 390 square feet, there's six cameras, there's a vault. Aside from limited and redacted personnel, files, and visitor logs, any records that are stored without disclosing anything that is confidential information to Paladin's business operations is, are not physically printed records that are there. There are electronic records, they're backed up to an external hard drive at the end of every single day. One of the hard drives is stored at a secure location off-site, and the other one is in a vault. Cash, when there's a transaction for a distributor, what happens is the vehicle, which, as far as vehicle security, there are cameras in the vehicles, there are real-time tracking and real-time communication mechanisms to the home base or the office location for security. And those vehicles are all inspected and regulated just as the building itself is by the tax commission. That vehicle goes out, it stops at cultivation or production facility number one, it picks up the product, it goes straight to where it's dropping off its product by varied routes. Typically, it will not take the same route in any pattern, again, for safety and security. Once it drops the product off, the records are updated real-time to the system that there's been a drop-off. The cash, if that business elects to have it picked up. Some businesses do not have the distributor transfer the cash. If a business elects to have the cash transfer, the cash is picked up and goes directly back to the last pickup. At the end of the day, when Mr. Benson described that in theory, it's 99% of the time there won't be product at the actual office location, I would say it's got to be less than 99%. The requirements are so stringent, if there is a reason that product has to be stored, there are security protocols in place to ensure that there is not a safety risk associated with doing that. But the red tape that Mr. Benson spoke about is so stringent, you, I mean, you have to advise the department within hours of why this is being stored there. We're talking about like a major highway is closed and you can't get back, and there's no one at the cultivation facility to sign for it between when you can get it to them the next time and when the lights go out and it's dark and something has to be done with it safely. There really should be very few, if any, during the course of this business's entire life, that products should be stored at the facility. That should never happen. I mean, their distributions, for the most part, a lot of them are not even in Carson City. This is really a home office kind of situation. It's very small. Like I said, 400s, roughly 400 square feet. And you would never know it from standing on the street.
Well, that's the issue, I think. I mean, one of the issues, I mean, is that, you know, for, for what you call a home office, we're being asked to make a zoning change. And I'm having, you know, I kind of understand that, but I'm having trouble understanding, you know, why a zoning change for just a home office? Because it doesn't seem like it's that big of imposition to find a home office in general commercial. I mean, you have to help me on that a little bit.
And I think I can do that because the amount of money spent to get that into compliance and get it approved and inspected by the Department of Taxation, it's not something you can just pick, I mean, there is a, it's a, there is a concrete vault. These are all things that had to be put into this. And just the other issue that I would like to speak on that hasn't necessarily been a question, but it's been statements from the board, I think there is some confusion as to the expectancy and the expectations that were conveyed to this particular business. And part of it is, this business has been issued a license that doesn't expire until June 30th, 2018. I have a copy of the license on my phone that I scanned in. It is June 30th, 2018. I also have a copy of an email from the Community Development Department between the Attorney General's Office, Department of Taxation, and the Community Development Department. And I don't want to paraphrase, I'm going to read it directly. This business, or well, it's Paladin, was issued a business license by the Carson City Business License Division on or before August 7th, 2017 pursuant to this adopted ordinance. While permanent regulations for all marijuana establishments are pending pursuant to the ordinance introduced on August 3rd, Kurt Brown has a valid business license to legally operate at that location in compliance with the city codes and separation requirements for marijuana establishments. Direct quote, "He can maintain his valid business license regardless of the final outcome of the new ordinance." End quote. Candidly, this has been- Candidly, this has been, I think, a very difficult transition for everybody in the state. There were very aggressive timelines for state governments, local governments, counties. So some confusion is expected. That's a pretty straightforward statement that this business owner will be able to continue. He can maintain his valid business license regardless of the final outcome of the new ordinance. There was a lot of reliance. There have been an exceptional amount...
With all due respect, I'm not certain, you know, you can reach that conclusion, but I get what you're trying to say. Okay? I mean, because what I think, that statement you just read is an accurate statement, but it doesn't say anything about location.
I, it does, actually. I mean, I can, I'm happy to, you can keep this copy if you want it, and then you get the whole context, you can see the entire conversation. It's about the location. The question is actually, you provided a letter, this is from the Attorney General's Office, you provided a letter regarding marijuana distributor location zoning approval for this business. The letter's dated May 30 and recommends that the Department of Taxation accept an application from this business for provisional approval subject to the adoption of final regulations by Carson City. Based on the August 3, 2007 meeting of the Board of Supervisors, it appears the code yet to be approved will not allow marijuana distribution as a conditional use for limited industrial districts. My understanding is that the property you are referring to in your letter is zoned light industrial. Could you let me know if your letter still stands or has changed based on the current status of the Carson City Municipal Code? And what I had read previously is the response. It's not just, it's not just the letter, it's not just the confusion and reliance. I think those are huge, but I personally, my clients might kill me, but I would be happy to have someone with a valid agent card who is employed by Paladin walk each one of you through the business. It's, it'll be a real short walk, but there's nothing, I mean, there's really, I can appreciate the security concerns, the safety concerns, and I think it's a difficult position for everybody to be in, especially because it's very new for everyone. But under this circumstance, if that, if your concerns are safety and security, I am confident that that will change your minds in a heartbeat, because I think that would illustrate the fact that there are extensive cameras, there is a live, real-time security system, there's sign-in codes, there's access codes, and this is for nothing but an office. But that's what's required by the Department of Taxation, and that's what this business did to get up and running.
All right. We've got a question from Supervisor Barrett, then Supervisor Bagwell.
Yeah, I just want to clear up this difference between April 1 and June 1, 1st. First, first?
Lee Plemmel, Community Development. So first, first to clarify that, I've seen the business license, and that business license, business license is, I'm not sure why it's June 1, and why it is June 30 on there, but I've seen it. It is, in fact, that these, on the actual piece of paper that was sent from our business license department, that's standard for the period, these, but, you know, and this is, it's a new, it's a new license. We're dealing with, we're dealing with new business licenses, so I, you know, I don't, they didn't catch that it's a temporary license and get that on there. These are quarterly licenses, they have to pay quarterly, that's also in there. But it does, the piece of paper that they have from business license does actually say from June 30. I don't think that precludes the city from revoking that license and making it any other date based on the decision by the Board of Supervisors today, though. But I think, but that is accurate, I believe, I saw that, that has the business license with the date, June 30 on it, 2018.
Okay. Supervisor Bagwell.
So, let me step back a little bit, and since we're going to be in the spirit of openness here, when Mr. Brown came to the meeting in August here, was it not clear, and it was prior to the issuance of that license on the 7th, it was clear that this board said it would be only in the general commercial and general industrial, both those locations, and no light industrial. We made it clear several times at this board level that that license was revocable and a privilege, that it was not a grandfathered ongoing right. So if, and I don't, I mean, I do mean to put you on the spot, because I think the plain language of everything that we did was very clear in our intent. I'm sorry that somehow you have a letter that potentially changes the intent that this board put on the record. It's a different answer than what this board voted on or discussed. So, but did you not have the impression that we wanted you to go to general industrial and general commercial?
I think I can answer that. It was, I believe it was a timing issue, because at that time, his business license was already being issued before that meeting. I don't think there's any, there's, I don't think there's any confusion as to what you guys have said and what has been displayed as your intent going forward. But at that point in time, the license was already processed and probably in the mail with the hard copy of it to him as that meeting occurred. So, part of it is the time, part of it is absolutely the timing, because the Department of Taxation started licensing at the beginning of July. At the beginning of July, Carson City didn't have regulations that prohibited it from being where it's at. So the Department of Taxation's reliance in issuing the license was based on the fact that the statute was not worded as stellar as it should have been, but it wasn't precluded by any zoning that was then in place at the time. So this ball started rolling long before it kind of got to your plate at that time, and so the investments were essentially already made. But I don't think that there's confusion as to what was expressed by the board members.
And if I may...
Don't you think that the Attorney General, who wrote what you just read out to us, so I guess it just surprises me, because I think even the Attorney General had the impression from what this board did in action, that there might not be a license to be issued at the state level or something, because the zoning wasn't appropriate. So, and maybe Dan can chime in here a little bit for us.
Okay, so, thanks very much, Supervisor. I do appreciate this opportunity to chime in. I've been listening, listening very carefully to what counsel for Paladin, and we haven't had a chance to meet, and I certainly, this is, I'm going to speak to this with all due respect to your position that you're taking today. I want to point out to everyone's, you know, recognition, if it's not explicitly recognized, is that we're not in a judicial forum today. All right, and I understand if the position that's being submitted is that implicitly or expressly, expressly, my client has, to his or her detriment, relied upon certain statements or indications made by personnel or staff, or even an entire department of the city. I mean, in my mind, that's not dispositive of anything that's before the board today. We're talking about making a decision with respect to the enactment of an ordinance upon first reading, and then subsequent to that, we're going to second reading. That's for zoning purposes. To go back to what I said earlier this afternoon, I believe it is within the municipal powers of this board, as a governing body of local government, to exercise those zoning powers because of the express language that we've always included as part of these ordinances. It's not a vested property right, it's a revocable privilege, and based on case law research that I've preliminarily had a chance to review, there is no requirement of an amortization period for any business that's currently in existence. I'm not advocating for a certain policy position one way or the other, but legally speaking, I do believe that this body is on solid ground, legally speaking. I understand, of course, that counsel is submitting for your consideration as both a policy standpoint, and then also perhaps as a legal theory, that she may or may not be advancing right now, and I don't want to put words in her mouth, but what I'm hearing is that, well, there's been some sort of reliance here, and we think that that's significant. Now, as you all know, I'm also counsel for our city's Community Development Director, and also, of course, Lee, as the Director of that department. With his permission, I can also share, and this is just so there's no confusion whatsoever, that there was, in fact, a subsequent correspondence via email that the Director had submitted to the same Deputy Attorney General after that email that was just read into the record by counsel, that said very expressly, "I want to make one point of clarification." That point of clarification is that in my previous email, I may have conveyed to you erroneously that there is going to be some sort of a grandfathering in, or that his license that was issued is going to continue in perpetuity. I'm now rescinding that analysis, right, based on our further readings of the ordinances and the legal effect after consultation with me as Deputy DA, as such that, no, the board maintains its jurisdictional authority as the governing body to revoke that, because it is, again, as I said, a revocable privilege license. So that's something that I just want to make straight for the record. Of course, counsel, including Mr. Benson, they were not copied on that. I didn't see a reason to ask Mr. Plemmel to copy anyone else, all the parties or the stakeholders, because even the initial correspondence between the city, meaning Mr. Plemmel, and with the Attorney General's Office, based on my understanding, is that that was just between those two parties. So, I mean, not to put anyone on the spot, I mean, I'm personally a little bit confused as to how that email may have been distributed more widely than was perhaps anticipated. I don't want to speculate as to how that may have happened, but, again, I'm just able to share this, because my client, Mr. Plemmel, has allowed me to do so on the record for clarity purposes. So, again, just to reemphasize to this board and to anyone else in the public, there was a subsequent analysis that was made via email to the same Deputy Attorney General. All right. The response from that Deputy Attorney General was along the lines of, "Thank you for the clarification." There was no dispute, and there was no objection.
We're going to try and move on here, because I don't want to be here until midnight again, but, because of the issues that are getting, being crystallized here. Supervisor Barrett, then we'll take up anybody else here on the...
Well, I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor, since I have to pick my wife up at the airport 10 minutes after 11 tonight. So, I understand your argument, and I empathize, but basically, what you're saying to me is, to use parlance here in Nevada, where we have gamblers, you were betting on the come. Is that correct?
Is that directed to me?
All three.
Oh, I don't think they can bet on the come. They don't have anything invested.
Okay, that is directed to you.
No, I never bet on the come.
But you've been, your representative has said you put in some money into this, at this location.
I'm fully expected to do business under the circumstances that I have all the correspondence, and was told at the meeting that I was grandfathered in by more than three people. And it was none of you people, no, but it was some of these people out here. So, and the other thing I'd like to clarify, and then I'll be done. I've been operating a business that does cash for 45 years. I've never been robbed, and I do $12 million in business, and 20% of my business is cash. So you figure that one out. And I do not even have one-tenth of that in cash in the business I'm presently in as Paladin. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, counsel?
Yes, may I just, I would like to say that I don't disagree with the analysis of counsel, your counsel. I don't necessarily disagree with that. It's, it is clear, it is a privilege license. I would argue that there are still some inherent due process rights that go along with that, but as just a general understanding, I don't disagree with anything that counsel essentially stated. We never received a copy of the subsequent email, never. So, and just as another kind of explanation, the only reason why I kind of brought up the reliance and expectations matters is because it was an explicit issue set forth in the staff reports. So, where the staff report states that, you know, there shouldn't be an expectation beyond April 18, April of 2018, that's why I wanted to ensure that the board all knew kind of the history and what had gone on. So, it's, I'm not making a legal argument necessarily, I just wanted to present the other side as far as what's in the staff report. But as a matter of fairness, and I would still extend the same invitation that I previously extended, this, because we have some time on our side at the moment, I will personally be happy to show any one of you through the facility at any point in time, so that you can resolve any concerns that you may have specifically related to its location, security, and safety. But as a matter of fairness, we would ask that there is some courtesy extended with respect to this particular business because of the investment that's been made and the way that we've kind of gone above and beyond and done any and everything to ensure the safety and security of the business and everything associated with it, especially employees.
If I may, just, very, very briefly, I don't want to repeat all of that, but I do want to say that what I was asking the board to do with regard to the change in zoning, I realize is an uphill climb. And, but part of why I gave that background is because I think it's also relevant to the grandfathering issue, and that if you do decide to grandfather this particular business in, that it is different, there's not going to be product there, there's not going to be a lot of cash there, and so forth and so on. And as staff mentioned early on when going through the staff report, it's a policy decision for this board of whether to grandfather in temporarily, not at all, or permanently. And so I understand you don't want to entertain the zoning change, and so what we would ask you to do instead is to entertain grandfathering permanently for this particular location, which, as discussed by staff, would allow it to continue. We think for the reasons I expressed earlier, that it's different from the other marijuana establishments, that it does not pose a risk to the community, and that it doesn't set a precedent, because it's limited to this particular business. And so that would be our request to the board.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Both of you, very well done. Okay. Hang on, Supervisor Barrett's got a question. Not getting off the hot seat that quick.
No, actually, I'd like to request that... Your mic. I'd like to request that the sheriff come up.
Challenging. Thank you. For the record, Sheriff, for, Kenny. It is challenging, because while we are the local law enforcement agency, we don't have the authority of oversight of these businesses when it comes to marijuana. So, and as some board members here are aware, and that's why I did want to take the microphone, as some board members are aware, we are, we are learning at the same time. But I do want to make a notation, because there's a communications issue here. We did inspect this business, be it whether or not we had the authority or the authorization to do it, we're still working these issues, as we've discussed within the last week. But the return information to me, as of August 2, there were an enormous amount of unsatisfactory conditions as far as safety and security from the opinion of those persons inspecting this business as it relates to the storage and ongoing activities. So, when we talk about things like a vault, we'll describe what a vault is. We have no ability here, right now, as we've discussed, to enforce any of these activities or to have an ordinance to land in front of them. But I do want to make it absolutely clear that at our inspection in August, I was briefed, this was a dismal failure, at least at their early onset. this was a dismal failure, at least at their early onset of activities. We have since gone back, as two of the board members are aware here today, we have since gone back, and we are retraining some of our officers, so that they better understand those compliance rules that the state has established, and that we can stay in line with those. But unfortunately, we have a triad, because we have a state authority over this industry, and we have a community board of supervisors that enacts ordinances, and we have a law enforcement organization that's expected to uphold the safety and security of the community. Very difficult when they're portraying themselves as outstanding safety and security, when we've already assessed it as being very, very poor. There needs to be an established standard, so that all are talking about the same thing.
Which, I would just like to add, is why all of our rules and regulations were directed towards what we put in place for medical establishments, because those are stringent, and they are secure, and that was why we labored over this to the extent that we did, because that's really important to the health, safety, and welfare of our community.
So I will take up any offer that the business wants to suggest, and we'll revisit them. But for this board, please, Mr. Mayor, understand, we, the sheriff's office, has no authority over those businesses.
John, and then we'll.
Yes, I just want to convey to Mr. Benson, if he would, to his client, that my reverence to betting on the come was not a criticism, it was a question eliciting information that I thought I had from you when you were testifying, that you've invested some money, and that's the reason given that you want to stay there. General Industrial, I don't see the big deal about staying there, except that that's where he's already located, and it's two separate businesses, so, as I've talked with you on the phone about, this is a matter of where you've located it, and we've already, as Supervisor Bagwell has said, determined that we want this in certain zoning locations, all of it, whatever it is. So I think you're right, it's a heavy lift, but I'm keeping an open mind at this point. But I wanted to ask that question, because you were making the point that you'd invested a lot of money.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Anything further? I think we've got, I think we've got a pretty good idea of what's going on here.
Sounds like we need a greenfield check.
Okay. I got it. All right, we're going to take further public comment on this issue, so, let's see what happens here, and then we'll move on. Okay, anybody else out there want to weigh in on this issue, or weigh in on the ordinance? Anybody want to weigh in? Okay, speak now or forever, hold your peace.
Questions, staff?
Questions, okay.
Mr. Plummel, can you tell me whether we have any other liquor distributors in this community besides one? Do we have more people with a liquor distributor license?
We do now. Yeah, there's one other thing that is located in the community, it's Lucinda Mahoney, is another in-town liquor license distributor. We've also recently, we have, well, there's a number of them that are out-of-town liquor distributors, and we've had a couple other recent applicants for liquor distribution applications in Carson City, which I don't know if that relates to marijuana distribution or not, but we have, but there's only one other one in Carson City.
Where is that other one?
And the other one is located in General Industrial.
All right. I don't see any more public.
Do we have a number, sorry, do we have a number of marijuana distributors that we approved, or was it open-ended? Did we, you know, we limited the number of certain establishments, what did we do on distributors?
Yeah, we've only limited the number of retail and distribution, retail and medical marijuana distribution facilities. Those are the only ones that are limited in number, dispensaries.
Right, so we could have unlimited distributors.
Yes.
I just, again, I'm just trying to gather sufficient information to help me form a decision. Thank you.
All right. I don't see anybody else aboard. What's your pleasure? I mean, Mr. Adler, you want to say anything? Time's moving.
I don't want to talk about distributors, but thankfully, we're all roped in on the same ordinance, so I did figure I'd come up and say hi. So, my name is Will Adler, with the Sierra Cannabis Coalition, I represent Rise and Sierra Wellness, both the dispensaries in town, and we are sort of cobbled into this whole ordinance together, so I'd like to speak for a little while. You know, I just want to state to distributor argument, what have you, that we do use distributors, we have used Black Privilegistics, all that, and it is not an easy subject. So this is new, this is new for all of us, and, you know, as far as we're concerned, we are separate from this issue. So I know this makes it really difficult for everybody to be in one ordinance together, because these are totally different, totally different arguments. So, I'd like to speak to the retail store part of the ordinance, and speak to what we've been doing and how we've been doing it in Carson City, to try and reaffirm our actions here. So, our dispensaries are secure locations that are to the nth degree. I mean, we have real vaults, we have cameras, we have personnel, staffing, ordinances, policies that we have to follow, and internal procedures. So, we've taken them to the next level. But one thing Carson City has sort of gotten the jump on, I'll say that, is more interaction with the local government and with the sheriff's office, actually. So, you know, as my clients ask me to, and as I advise, we've actually reached out and gone the extra mile, and tried to do the most we could in Carson City, to not just do the bare minimum of a bit, a go above, beyond, interact with the sheriff's department, try and have a real conversation, a real dialogue, because we felt it was important to make you guys feel comfortable with us. So, I just want to explain that we did have a community meeting on the 14th, and we did have a sheriff's meeting on the 13th, and we have decided to move forward with things that are not even regulated yet. We're not waiting for the regulations to mandate it. We're going to have a great partnership with the sheriff's office, with the people in Carson City, because we feel like we're ready, and we want to show that we're ready. We're the best actors anywhere in the state, I'll say that, because we're going forward and saying, "Come inspect us, do transparency, do tours, meet our staff," and in fact, we're actually going to train one of the sheriff's officers to be up to snuff with all state levels of compliance, and with all levels of local compliance, and our own internal policies, so they have zero questions about what goes on behind our doors, because we have actually said, "Come in, and we'll tell you, we'll train you, and you will have instant access to anybody you want." So, I just want to say that, you know, despite how hairy this conversation's gotten, we are in this ordinance and a separate issue, so, be it as it may, we're here as well, but I just want to say that Rise, Sierra Wellness are both ready. We're ready to serve Carson City, we could serve them today, but we, you know, see it as an opportunity right now to say, you know, thank you for bringing this back up, and that I wanted to issue that we are separate in this, but we are the ready part of this ordinance. We could go today, no problems, and we've done everything we can to make Carson City comfortable with us, because we're ready to service it. So, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Adler. Okay. All right. Anybody else? I don't see any. We'll bring it to the board here and see what we want to do. Board?
I have a comment.
Comments, okay.
You know, exceptions to the rule have consistently come back to be headaches for future boards. And so I have real heartburn going against what we deliberated on so, at such length a few weeks ago. And I'm not about to do it in this case. I'm not saying that this liquor distributor cannot do business, just not in that location. It's just not what we approved. And this board voted on a January 1 date for retail stores, and I'd prefer to just keep a consistent date for all of, all this to be compliant. I just feel that that's in the best interest of our community, and that's my thought process going forward, so.
Mr. Barrett?
I agree with much of what Supervisor Ebert has said, but I would make one exception, and that is that, after hearing the testimony today, and seeing the April 1st date as the first recommendation, or one of several, let's put it that way, but a recommendation that would allow us to let the distributor go until whatever date, any date we wanted to choose, since we have that option. I would say, just because of the glitch involved, that I would propose that we go to June 30th of 18, and then he'd have to move, but that's up to the majority of the board, that's just what I think I would try to do. I pretty much agree, we said January 1st of 18, I've pretty said that pretty consistently. I actually have the belief that this is not going to be as harrowing as we think, but I have no crystal ball, it might turn out to be more harrowing, that's bringing marijuana to us. I happen to be of the belief that it's all medicinal, alcohol is medicinal, marijuana is medicinal, opioids are medicinal, and then people abuse them. Happens to be legal now, it wasn't, opioids always have been legal, liquor's been legal since the Volstead Act was repealed. But whether it's good, bad, or indifferent, we're stuck with making a decision here. I didn't want recreational, because I think it's medicinal, I think we had a nice, small industry here, but the people who want to make money felt that they wanted to go recreational, so that's where we're going to go. So those are my thoughts, and my only difference with Karen is I would say, let's give him more time to move.
Well, actually, you know, I kind of somewhat agree with that, but on the other hand, I think that, you know, one, the sheriff raised some concerns for me in my mind, I mean, I just got to tell you that. And second, John, you know, maybe you could help me on this one, is that, you know, if they're going to move, I mean, if that, and this is what this board said to do back in August 3rd, or whatever it was, you know, what's the rationale for extending the time to move? I mean, it's, tell me, if you can help me on that one a little bit.
Oh, I just think it's the overlap of the business license, it's not a big deal to me, if you want to go a different way. April 1st, June 30th, January 1st, whatever the majority decides, I just propose that as a thought, because I don't buy the argument that they didn't see it coming, but I do buy the argument, they had an expectation, they had a business license, and they went ahead and started the business, because they can ship it anywhere, from here to Las Vegas, et cetera. So, they wanted to get up and running, and they did. I don't particularly buy the argument that they've invested a huge amount in a 390-square-foot facility, and I don't think it can't be moved, I just think they don't want to move it. But I'd give them time, but if you, if the board majority goes a different way, it won't, it won't, I won't vote no, I just proposed it as a sort of a middle ground. Or April 1st, that was what was the first option.
All right. Anybody want?
So, our discussion point, unless I'm missing something here, that we all are kind of going on the record to say Light Industrial is out, so we've gotten that part kind of decided. Now the discussion is, do we want to give them a January 1st that matches the same date that we did to the retail locations, that they couldn't operate till January? Do we go with April 1st that matches the original temporary ordinance, which, you know, the temporary ordinance would have expired April 1st, 2018? So in my eyes, there's absolutely zero expectation past April 1st, 2018, because the ordinance itself would expire. Or, and I'm not, I'm just going to go on the record for myself, I'm not buying the June 30th answer on the license, because I recognize it's a mechanical issue, that this is the first time we've done quarterlies with different expiration dates, and so I'm sure it just rolled off the printer in its normal little process. So really, our discussion is January or April. And maybe we could just bring it to that, which answer is the more appropriate?
The difference I see is that what we've done for the retail is we've stopped them from business. This guy's already in business, so I'm just giving him a little time to move, but.
All prevail. What's the theory about January 1?
Consistency.
Consistency.
Yeah, consistency.
All right.
Everyone has to be compliant by a specific date.
And your other argument stands, Mr. Mayor. He's got to move it, he's got to move it. What difference does it make whether it's January, actually, I want to go with January, because that's when retail marijuana will be available in Carson City. And that's where, to me, if our whole argument is the risks, that's when the greatest risk will begin. And so I want to go with January.
Well, I consistently haven't agreed with the idea that we're going to be at great risk, I think there are risks associated, and they've been pointed out earlier, that have nothing to do with the distribution, they have to do with children, but we can't legislate about the children's issue, I understand the feelings, but I'm not arguing for April 1st, I'm just saying that I would give him a little more time, but again, I'll go back to the January 1st, if that's what you guys all want.
Okay, motion's in order.
So, for the motion, and Dan, this is where I come back to you, if we, if alternative 1 is the one that I read into the record and changed the date, does that, that fits all the parameters of what we previously approved, correct?
If, you know, before I answer that question, let me, if you could give me just a 30-second break to read that, I just want to be certain.
Yeah, we'll be in recess for five minutes. Take a.
Can I have a break instead?
Give you a recess.
Okay, fantastic, even better. Thank you.
We'll be in recess for about five minutes.
We'll be in recess for about five minutes.
Bill number? 124.
All right. I move to introduce on first reading, Bill Number 124, An Ordinance Relating to Marijuana, as submitted today with the revision, to allow non-conforming marijuana establishments operating under a valid business license at the time of the adoption of this ordinance to continue to operate until January 1 of 2018, after which such businesses shall cease operation unless all requirements have been met in full compliance with the zoning provisions of Title 18.
There's a motion.
I'll second that for clarification, and the other technical discussion that we had on the record today to correct the exemption in the light industrial. I'll amend my motion to include that. Thank you, Lori.
All right. On a motion, further discussion?
So we're voting on the whole thing, not just amendment? This is an amendment, though.
Pardon me?
This is amendment. Are we voting on the amendment or the whole ordinance?
No, this...
Whole ordinance as amended.
Okay.
As amended, as amended.
Just wanted to know.
I mean, we can go back, and, I mean, unless somebody's got a heartburn about the process, we'll take it as amended. All right. Everybody clear about what the motion is, as amended? All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay. Let's take up the next item. Let's take up 27 Bravo. This is Title IV. Who's doing this?
I'll do this. Jan Lee Plummel, Community Development. This is action to introduce the ordinance relating to marijuana, amending Title IV. The primary purpose of this is to establish the business license fees and the methods for collecting it. Again, this was introduced and by the board initially on August 3rd. I don't think there's been no substantive amendments to this. I think might be some technical corrections we made, and we'll continue to check those for second reading, but the crux of this one is that we are proposing to impose the maximum business license fee permitted by state law of 3% of the gross revenues. And with the adoption of this ordinance, we'll be able to start implementing those. Actually, these are the fees in the temporary license for those businesses that are already operating, are already operating under this fee structure, but this formalizes the permanent regulations for existing and future businesses for the business license fees. We're available for questions.
Questions in order.
Comment. I'd like to just, if we could, go to page nine of the proposal, please. I think we were working really hard to set what the validation requirements were that the city would utilize to verify the 3% fee. And in looking at this, all of the, I believe all of the marijuana establishments have to give a compilation report from an auditor to the Department of Taxation, so I'm just thinking out loud that instead of accepting and trying to have them do a 10-day report by a CPA that's, is it a review? Is it an audit? Why don't we just accept the actual compilation report by the auditor, the same one they give the Department of Taxation, and then if their quarterlies don't equal the true-up of that audit report, you can charge them the penalties that we have later in there anyway, if it doesn't true-up? If that makes sense what I'm, because they're not going to go get an auditor every quarter that can get it done in 10 days and certify the, so let's just take their annual compilation, if that makes sense? Just by practice, I got to thinking about it. I don't know that they could even comply, so why don't we just take the legal documentation they provide the Department of Taxation? Does that work?
Annual.
Annual, right. The annual.
So that would mean you take out 9 Alpha on that page?
We would just change it to, we will accept the required documentation from the Department of Taxation for their audit reports. And then we'll true it up.
Anybody? Other comment? I don't see any. All right. Let's bring it back here, and we'll see if you want to make a motion. If you want to make a motion, Supervisor Bagwell.
You have anything else?
Somebody have a comment on the business license?
Do you need a clarification?
Yeah, so we're on page nine, section 9A. Is that the particular paragraph?
Correct.
I've heard a couple, are you suggesting delete it, or to modify it?
You would just modify it to indicate that we, they will provide the annual compilation by an auditor as required by the Department of Taxation? And then you'll true it up. You'll take your four quarters, verify it against that audit report, and if they owe you money, then they get to pay the 25% penalty that's in the other section, if they short-paid us.
So how do we, so what are we collecting quarterly?
They're going to give you the form and pay you, they're going to, I made, I don't know, I made $10,000, and I owe you 3% of that. Then you'll get the annual report that they also have to, right, and they'll true it up.
True-up.
Standard accounting.
Oh, boy.
We can help with specific language if you need it. That brought them up.
So this is Will Adler, for the record, with Sierra Cannabis Coalition. All MMEs and MEs have to do an annual report to the Department of Taxation that has, you know, everything in it, including a compilation from a CPA of our entire year's books, and that's, whether you're just a cultivation, production, or you have all three businesses, you have to get accomplished for each business you have. So we're already doing this packet for the state. We could just turn this into you guys as well. I think it's what Lori, or Supervisor Bagwell is getting to.
That we're getting the same tax base as the state is. They'd report and give us money quarterly on a form. It's just a little, like a tax return, like a sales tax return, right? But then you'll get the annual audited report that you can validate. They paid us the appropriate business license.
So just to be certain, I mean, I agree with, you know, Mr. Adler's assessment. That is the requirement, but just to make sure that we can do this logistically, mechanically here for the city, what you're talking about is a verification at the end of the year, then? Okay.
Do you all have, is, may I ask one question, though? And maybe you guys know this. Is it all of you on the same calendar year reporting requirements that the reports are due? Or is it based on your own individual business year-end? So it's five.
This is Lucinda Mahoney, for the record. We are required to submit the compilation at the time that we renew the business license, which can be different. This is Lucinda Mahoney. I have another comment in regard to that, and that is in regard to the 10 days that was identified in the ordinance. I would suggest that we propose that we change that to the last day of the subsequent month, because it's difficult to, I don't know if you had mentioned that, Lori, but it's difficult to close your books in 10 days and get the money out, and I would suggest that we just be consistent with other taxes for the state of Nevada, like the sales tax.
The same as sales tax. You have to the last day of the subsequent month.
Yes, I would, that would be very helpful.
Does that work? Does that work?
Okay with that.
All right, just making sure. Got my lawyer hat on now, trying to, I shouldn't do that either. All right. All right. Let's try a motion, see where it goes. I think that the issue that was just brought up about the payables changing from the last day of the month, or the following month, works, just like sales tax, okay? And I just want to make sure that, you guys can draft this, but so that... The compilation is going to be annual? Is that what we're going to say there?
It's almost the B language, and it's just annual, because it's just what they have to give taxation. So if you look at 9B...
And so when we say written document, we say written documentation of such revenue must be submitted to business license concurrently with a quarterly fee, and...
And annually.
What do you supply on a monthly basis?
You mean to the Department of Taxation? I provide nothing. The recreational law does not require a producer to submit anything. However, the cultivators do need to provide, you know, a 15% tax monthly, and so they provide reports to support that.
So how about the retail establishments? What do you submit?
So that would be the same dismissal as a monthly dismissal to Department of Tax, but it's not 15%, it's the 10% excise tax that we have to do, and then a, you know, whatever we're going to do with Carson City, I guess we could do the 3% as well, but every quarter we'll do the payment, compile our three months there.
What do you give to the Department of Taxation on a monthly basis?
It is a tax return, basically, on our sales tax and our excise tax at the retail level. So depending on your region, Carson City's 7.6, and then the 10% excise tax we have to record, document that for the Department of Tax every month, but we also have a whole integration with the seed sale tracking software, other things we have to show them, you know, when audited or asked to, so.
What I'm getting here is that, you know, the existing language, I mean, we're all talking about 9A, or 9, yeah, 9A, but really what we're saying is, pursuit of this subsection, written documentation of such revenue must be submitted to the business license division concurrently.
Excuse me. What I would suggest is cultivation and dispensaries also are required, when they renew their business license, to submit the compilation report. It seems like that would be sufficient for all of the marijuana establishments.
All right. All right. Anybody else want to weigh in on this issue?
Yeah, to be clear, I think the only thing we're looking at was that, you know, signed financial document from a CPA 10 days after the quarter, that's the only thing we wanted to, the rest of the language is fine, I believe. And then that, you know, quarterly CPA signature is replaced by our, you know, annual compilation.
All right. Dan, do you have enough?
I think that's fine. I think the record's fairly clear. I'll come back and review if I need to.
Does that constitute a substantive change? It has to go first reading again? Please say no.
No.
No, because it's just, it's...
And not just to make you happy, Mr. Mayor, but I really do think that's just a fairly technical change.
All right. Let's take a motion. Go.
Is that the only thing? Was there anything else? Okay.
She had another item. That's what I said.
The other item that I have relates to item number five, and item number five addresses confidentiality, and specifically, what I'm concerned about currently is that when we renew our business licenses, there are publications that are made in the newspaper and other areas that identify our street address, and from a safety perspective, I try to not ever give out our street address. I don't want anybody to know where we are. And so my suggestion would be that in item number five, that we add a statement that says something like this, "A marijuana establishment may request that the street address is replaced with a PO box for publication purposes." And then that way criminals can't find us easily. They'll have to look more difficult.
I'm looking at this on a computer here, so not certain exactly where you are on, I'm looking at...
Page 15.
Hang on.
Page 15, section 5. Paragraph 5. It's the confidentiality. It says confidential information.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Paragraph 5.
If I may, and if I understand that proposed language, you know, legally speaking, I think I would be opposed to that change. I think that the way it's currently written in its RAF form does the trick, so to speak. It's only that Carson City would be allowed to share any information that's not otherwise declared to be confidential under existing unrest provisions, and for purposes of facilitating coordination with other... coordination with other applicable state agencies or federal agencies. So, it doesn't do anything, or doesn't allow Carson City to do anything above and beyond what would also be allowed under NRS. So, I would be really reluctant to change it so that it does no, so that it no longer mirrors what state law already says on the subject.
Okay, so then what that forces me to do then is, at the state level, I would have to declare my application information confidential. And then as a result, if I declare it confidential at the state level, it is construed to be confidential at the local level, and therefore, none of it would be published at all.
Mr. Mayor, if, with your permission, if you want me to engage in this dialogue...
Well, I think we need to get this worked out. I mean, it's fine. I think, you know, we got the other part worked out. Let's work this out, so.
So, okay, so to answer that question, I mean, no person in the state of Nevada can unilaterally declare his or her records to be confidential or not confidential. That's determined by state law. That's codified in NRS, right? That's subject to, you know, the Public Records Act. So, I can't say, for example, that what I'm submitting to the state agency, or for example, what I'm submitting to, you know, the DMV or whatever applicable agency we're talking about is or is not confidential. It either is or is not based on the application of state law. So, however, those provisions of state law currently exist with respect to the confidentiality and the requirement that it be maintained as confidential under state law would apply also to local government, to Carson City under this ordinance. So, we don't really need to cull anything out. We don't need to make any exemptions or anything else. It just mirrors whatever the state government is going to require or allow, as far as confidentiality goes. And I guess, I think what I'm saying, the long, the short of this, is whatever issue or concern you may have, that's, I think, actually a dispute that you would have on the state level, not with the local level.
Mayor, if I might chime in, actually, taxation has very, very strict confidentiality rules. Anything that you submit to taxation with regard to your taxes is completely confidential. They actually have to get the approval of the governor to be able to disclose that information. So, you might want to check with them, but I think your records with taxation is fine. And so, what Mr. Yu is saying is that basically, those would be, those would run down to the local level. Whatever is confidential at the state level with regard to your taxation records would be confidential under local, and that's what this says, is section 5. Feel any better?
I guess I'm still confused. Will my address get published when I renew my business license if I declare that my records are confidential?
And you might want to check with taxation on that. And then we would follow the same thing as taxation.
Okay, so, all right.
Did we print your address when you got your first license?
You did. And it was in the newspaper, and I don't want, I don't want it in the newspaper. It's a safety issue for my employees and for my facility. I'll work it out offline, then, okay?
I don't want you to think, you know, trying to rush through this, because I tend to agree with you on addresses. I mean, I couldn't find your place, and I think that's important that I couldn't find it. You had to come down and run me down.
I had to wave for you.
You didn't wave to me.
No, it's intentional. It's intentionally that way.
So, I think that's, I'll tell you what. See if you can work that out with the planning and the legal folks and then, because I think that's a non-substantive change as well, and we'll just, the motion, I think, if we can do it like this, would say, you know, that we're going to, plus any change to addresses or post office boxes as determined by staff in consultation with you.
That'd be great.
So, I don't know, I don't know the answer. I don't, I don't see where that would go right in 5 right now. That's why I'm worried about it. I don't see, where would you add that post office box language in section 5?
Well, I'm not familiar with... I'm not familiar with all of the code for Carson City, but probably Dan is. Maybe it's more appropriate in a different section. I don't know, but...
All right. All right. Then the motion, then the motion would be, we will instruct our staff to make such changes as are necessary in the ordinance to protect the confidentiality where appropriate on the address of a location.
Thank you.
No, thank goodness.
I don't see any. All right. Somebody try a motion, and we'll fix it up here.
Let me do it. Okay. Bill number?
125.
I move to introduce on first reading, Bill Number 125, an ordinance relating to marijuana amending Title 4, to establish various provisions for the issuance of a business license to operate as a marijuana cultivation facility, marijuana product manufacturing facility, marijuana distributor, or marijuana retail store, to repeal various other provisions relating to the issuance of a temporary business license to operate as a marijuana establishment, to repeal provisions establishing a moratorium on the acceptance of the applications for the business license to operate as a marijuana establishment, to revise Number 9, to indicate that we will accept the, an annual compilation from an auditor for validation of their taxes, the same that they provide to the Department of Taxation, and that staff and the staff can work with applicants to determine if a confidential address can, to utilize where confidential address is appropriate.
Right, if it's appropriate, they can deal with the issue of the confidentiality of the specific address. Okay? Is that good enough with you? Dan, you got it?
Yes.
All right. Everybody clear on what this motion is? With a couple minor changes there. All right. On the motion, all in favor, stick your hand up by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay. We're done for that. All right. Let's take a public comment, concluding public comment. Anybody want to weigh in? Anybody? All right. Don't see anything. Are we ready to adjourn?
Oh, yes.
Unless there's an objection, we're adjourned.